In place of a invocation, I would like to honor Mrs. Winn, who was buried today. I will tell you that we did some research. We were asked about potentially raising or lowering the flag to half-staff. As I can tell, there are two people that can do that. One is a governor, one's a president. The city council, the mayor, the mayor pro temp, we're not part of that. So while we would have liked to do that, we chose not to. So I will also say that it was, I did go to Mrs. Winn's funeral today, and it was great to see the police chief. Oh, there's lights. And the police honor guard. So thank you for coming. I just want to read her obituary because she was actually a very great lady. Barbie T. Winn lived every moment of her life to the fullest and loved every second. She was born in Arlington, Texas on August 17th, 1917, to Walter Barbie Taylor and Eunice Taylor, and died on Thanksgiving Day, November 23rd, 2017, at the age of 100. She came of age into depression and learned how to creatively approach life. She became a horsewoman, businesswoman, marksman, cook, tailor, athlete, and the belle of the ball when she was elected queen of North Texas Agricultural College, now UT Arlington. She graduated from UT Austin with a physical education degree in 1939. After moving to San Antonio to teach Elmo Heights High School, she continued her romance with the man who she loved, who was the love of her life for 71 years, Murray Winn. Together, they were partners in all aspects of life, three sons, Tom, Steve, and Randy. She and Murray helped Murray's father, Murray Winn Senior, operate Winn's variety stores. She created Barbie's pinatas and sold them in Joski's department store. She and Murray moved, opened Murray's candies in two locations. One of the most notable achievements was the founding of the city of Windcrest. Barbie helped design and decorate the first 200 homes, and started Christmas lights, Christmas light up program in 1959, which is still successful today. She was an avid golfer, hunter, fisherman, scuba diver, skier, and worked in historical preservation in the city of Burney. She was awarded Sportsman of the Year in 1971 by the San Antonio Light newspaper. Before motorhomes had been invented, she and Murray bought several buses and converted them into motorhomes. She lived in Burney for 30 years and was a member of the First United Methodist Church in Burney. After Murray's death in 2003, Barbie lived alone until the age of 90, when she reconnected with an old friend, Lynn Weems. She and Lynn were married for over two years until his death. For the past years, her son, Steve, moved in to help manage the household and care for her. Barbie wrote her autobiography called Ain't Livin' Fun in 2005. She celebrated her 100th birthday last August with 100 friends and family members. She may have been 100 after her, at her death, but it was too soon for everyone. She left behind, she, she know, we know, she is joining her many loved ones who have gone before, including happy spirits of her dogs and her horses she adored. We won't see another like her. In her autobiography, Barbie wrote, "I can take, I can look back and see all things, hard times, happy times, sad times, bunch of them all together. Thank God for a wonderful life. Life is a beautiful journey. We travel in our own unique way, with memories behind us and dreams ahead of us, and a brand-new beginning of each day." Barbie survived by her sons, Tom Winn, Steve Winn, Randy Winn, stepsons Lynn and Scott Weems, nine grandchildren, and great grand, seven great-grandchildren. So I'd like to have a moment of silence for Barbie Winn and her family. Thank you. Please be seated.
Thank you, Officer Rosales. I did want to reiterate what you said kind of in writing
because it is, in a, on the record, because it's obviously being taped now. And so I'm going to read this, and I may read this at several city council meetings so that we make sure we, we understand how, how we should be conducting the business. "Thank you for attendance at this meeting at the Windcrest City Council. The meeting follows the regulations of the State of Texas Open Meetings Act, and is conducted according to Robert's rules. According to City Charter, Section 3.10, the posted agenda must, must provide to citizens to be heard, allowing citizens the opportunity to address the city council on topics not on the agenda for, for not more than three minutes. Citizens must have the opportunity to address the council, must have the opportunity to address the council during consideration of posted agenda items for no more than six minutes. Speaking on behalf of all of us at the dais tonight, I extend invitation of public comments. We welcome your input. In order to foster an environment conducive to free and open communication, I request that all persons in a room refrain from making any noises whatsoever during citizens-to-be-heard addresses. If an outburst interrupts a citizen who is addressing the council, an officer may be directed to intervene. As authorized by the Windcrest City Council, all comments by citizens must be addressed directly to the city council, and time limits will be strictly enforced. If a citizen speaks to the council on items but not on the agenda, please note that Texas Meetings, Open Meetings Act forbids any comment by the council. Those that the dais will respect and listen to your, to your comments." With that, we'll go to citizens to be heard.
For non-agenda topics, Pam Dotson.
Hi, I'm Pam Dotson. And unfortunately with this topic, I'm kind of like a broken record. I have a tendency to repeat myself. But I do believe that it's of the greatest importance for our city, since we are an open government, and we claim to be a transparent government, that when citizens make an open records request, that those requests are filled. I now have 11 open record requests that have not been filled. I'm hoping that with the new members of the council, I may be able to get the public information requested. As I am sure you are aware, the release of public information is required by state law, and the city has been violating this law since 10 business days after December 20th of last year, so it soon will become a year. I would like to know if other open record requests have been filled, and is this possibly a case of discrimination? I also want to mention the boxes that have left City Hall. The city manager, the chief of police, and then members of the city council, and the mayor, all taking boxes out of City Hall. All should remember that if any of those documents had anything to do with city business, they are no longer a personal document, but a document belonging to the city. Could this possibly be a case for the Texas Rangers to investigate where all these, all these papers went, and why?
Liz Dick.
Good evening, council. Excuse me. My name is Liz Dick. I am before this council and the citizens to express my disdain for the actions of two seated council members at our last council meeting. Refusing to shake the hand of our newly-elected mayor, Dan Reese, was a slap in the face to the 884 citizens who voted for him. But it also shows that he has a personal agenda that is greater than the better good of the citizens who put him in office. This cannot be tolerated. The other council member proceeded to laugh out loud at citizens, at citizens as they spoke during citizens-to-be-heard, trying to demean the heartfelt concerns of our citizens. This cannot be tolerated. Then after our city manager put Dan Reese's email requesting items needed to do his job on the agenda, to have the majority of the seated council members to table this item as a ploy to demean our mayor and to delay him from taking over his duties, show that these three council members have a personal agenda. This cannot be tolerated. If these men, including our city manager, cannot work with our elected mayor, they may consider stepping down and get people in here that are willing to move forward to improve our city. Stop the personal agendas. Do to, do the job you were elected to do. Remember, you work for the citizens. This will not be tolerated. Thank you.
Frances Behrens.
Okay, good evening. My name is Frances Behrens. I'm not a person who's comfortable speaking in public, but I feel compelled, but I feel compelled to step up and express my concerns that I have over the way the last city council member meeting was conducted. The citizens of Windcrest gathered together at City Hall to watch a swearing-in of our newly-elected mayor and the newly-elected city council members. What transpired was appalling and an insult to every citizen of our city. A prayer was given, asking God for guidance and strength in overcoming adverse adversary at the meeting, even though I think adversity was the word he was looking for. Adversary is a noun. The meaning is a person, group, or force that attacks an opponent. I didn't expect that word to be used because I thought we were there to have a smooth transition of elected officials who wanted to do nothing more than serve the citizens of Windcrest to the best of their ability. I didn't think they were going to create havoc. Then we went on to citizens-to-be-heard. We've heard from citizens of memory, many former Windcrest volunteer firefighters, who by the way, served with distinction for many years. They poured their hearts out, explaining all the hardships they suffered, giving thousands of hours, going into harm's way and missing many family functions. What did they do therefore, because of their desire to keep the city that they love safe? I wonder how many of us would have made that sacrifice? What thanks did they get for their loyal service, for all the hours that they gave so freely? They received a letter of termination with no explanation, with a simple statement that the services were no longer needed. Years of experienced, fully-trained firemen thrown away without an explanation. I hope there's not a secret agenda. While several of the Windcrest volunteer firemen and a citizen were speaking, speaking to add insult to injury, sitting council member openly smirked and laughed out loud more than once. Is this uptight game they are playing? Do they think it's funny not to have the proper amount of trained firemen? On a personal note, I was in need of an ambulance during the first week of our new fire chief being on the job. It took 18 minutes before the ambulance came. No police, no rescue, no chief. When the chief arrived a few minutes after the ambulance, he said it took that long because dispatch gave him the wrong address, even though I called dispatch three more times, giving the same information. Why did it take 18 minutes for the chief and ambulance to go a little over a mile to my house? Unfortunately, because of my husband's illnesses, I've had to call several times in the past for assistance or an ambulance. In the past, it never took more than five minutes, and the former fire chief was always there, along with rescue and/or the police in a timely manner. I think we should rethink who heads our fire department. A person who can take care of the citizens of Windcrest in a timely manner at 18 minutes is unacceptable. The next time it takes that long, a life may be lost. Then in a total lack of respect, our newly-elected, to our newly-elected mayor, when our new mayor extended his hand to another sitting council member, that council member refused to shake it. I hope the citizens of Windcrest took notice of all the infantile ways the sitting members treat our fellow citizens in newly-elected offices. It is a time that we all try to pull together for the citizens of Windcrest. There is much to be done. You may find out that by working together, we may accomplish a great deal.
John Gretz.
Holy cow. Hard act to follow. John Gretz, 5802 Winding Ridge. And I do shake hands, but I actually bump because shaking hands on a golf course is not legal. How many of you remember the Rack Space fiasco? Hello? Can you hear me? When the annexation of property down to Eisenhower, Rack Space gave Windcrest $5 million to build their road. Of that, $3 million was stolen. We had $17 million in liability and land deals. The Kane brothers, Ronnie and Gary, were indicted for deception, theft, misappropriation of fiduciary property, money laundering, et cetera. In my humble opinion, both of the Kane brothers should be in jail today. They aren't. That's another story in itself, which I don't have time for now. However, I do have time to show how this fiasco got started. Although the aforementioned corruption started a bit before Resolution 275 was ratified on 22 January 2007, it was Mayor Pro Temp, Dan Reese, who made the motion to ratify the resolution on that day. That resolution gave the mayor, Jack Leonard, and Ronnie Kane, the city administrator or manager, total autonomy to run the show. Council members were out, EDC members were out, citizens were out. It was all delegated to Leonard and Kane, period. Well, fellow citizens, you see how that turned out. Now that Dan Reese was elected mayor, I will not forget the motion he made as our mayor pro temp that got Windcrest in major financial trouble a decade ago. It was the epitome of incompetence, in my humble opinion. And I'd be remiss if I didn't law the outstanding service of Mayor Alan Baxter. He got us out of this mess, period, and moved Windcrest to be a great little city with no debt, superb economic development, beautiful parks and green spaces, outstanding public services, low taxes, and a develop, and developed an outstanding team of city employees who love coming to work, focus on customer service, and treat our citizens as family. With that, Dan, I plan and commend all citizens to monitor your performance very closely. You have big shoes to fill, and I may be the next Roy Huff. Thank you.
Paul Greenwood.
Good evening. I'm Paul Greenwood, 6110, Wendy Knoll. This should be a little lighter. A couple items, and I'm not sure whether these were agenda items or not, since we're going to look at the ordinance for this particular meeting, but both these items, I think we need to do something about to help our citizens. We need some guidance on citizens to be heard, some written guidance, when you can sign up, when, when you pick it up, and when it's over. I came in 40 minutes before a regular council meeting and was refused to speak. So we need some guidance. It may be in that ordinance that we take that. The other item I think that needs to be looked at is this great video system we have here. Our records are on tape, and we can go back and look at it, but unfortunately, the availability to the citizens that don't see it, or don't have an opportunity to come, sometimes gets stretched out into a couple of weeks. I'd like to see that, if there's no technical reason why not to have that available to our citizens in 24 hours. Thank you.
Rita Davis.
Two of the other former speakers stole my thunder with regards to being sensible people and courteous to one another. I think that that's where all of this got all off track, when people started sniping at each other, especially from the council. I think that the people that are sitting on the dais have taken the time, the effort, the money, the, their talents, that they're willing to share with the citizens. But don't forget, the citizens also have talents. The citizens also want your, our best interest to be enfleshed with what you do, with policy and procedures here in Windcrest. I think that between the people sitting here and the people sitting behind me, we should all be more courteous to one another. I think that from this day forward, we have a new mayor, a new start, and I think that pettiness and sniping at each other and bullying, I think should be part of our past now. And I think that we should go forward with a smile on our face and a willingness to shake hands and put, let bygones be bygones, and let's start over.
Kim Wright.
Kimberly Wright. I have lived here 25 and a half years. Never have I witnessed such sore losers. At the last meeting, a council member asked for prayers in overcoming the adversaries which may be present at our meeting. Adversaries. I grew up in a town this size, and we had contentious elections. But when it was all said and done, people shook hands and moved forward for the best interest of our city. Shame on you. I watched last month, last month, as petty men voted to deny our new mayor an email address, business cards, and a city cellphone to do the job the citizens elected him to do. The mayor is our governmental and ceremonial head of the city government, and city administrative officer. The city manager displayed insubordination by refusing the new mayor's very reasonable requests and placing it on the agenda for the majority of the council to deny. Shame on you. Those, there are members on this dais who have put our city in peril by hiring a fire chief who isn't qualified for the job. The new fire chief has terminated 12 of our volunteers, many of them homeowners in Windcrest, for no cause. Two of our units were out of service at the same time during a fire on Spindrift. Windcrest! Windcrest had to wait for another, another department to respond to a fire in our city. That doesn't happen here. Shame on you. Council, city staff, we have a charter to follow, and if you choose not to follow it, then I suggest you resign now. Y'all represent the citizens, all of the citizens, and we will not be silent.
Ron Merriman.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, citizens of Windcrest. My name's Ron Merriman. I live at 421 Windcrest Drive. I've lived there for the past five years. Been a member of the Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department for two months shy of four years. I received a letter from Jonathan Weedman, the Windcrest Volunteer Fire Chief, stating, "Your services are no longer needed or required. I have never received any formal or informal counseling about any negative or substandard performance as a volunteer firefighter." Jonathan Weedman did not know me, or know firsthand of my performance or qualifications, since I'd only been back from vacation for less than a week before receiving my letter of termination. He did not know, what he did know is he was given a list of names to give letters to, and he was going to follow through with that list and, where his job would be in jeopardy. He did not care that I was qualified to drive and operate every vehicle owned by Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department. He did not care that I was one of the few who could pull hours during the day, all week, when other volunteers were working their regular jobs. He did not care I lived only three blocks from the station and monitored my pager to respond to fires and emergencies during normal working hours, when there were sometimes only the chief available to respond to emergencies. He did not care I volunteered between 10 and 60 hours a week. He did not care that I had just completed classes to become an emergency medical technician, including required ambulance rides and required emergency room rounds. He did not care I had 30 years of firefighting experience while on active duty for the United States Navy. He did not care I have trained and qualified and certified thousands of firefighters in the United States Navy. He didn't care I had trained and qualified aircrafts, crash crews. He didn't care I had trained and qualified personnel and hazardous material spills and cleanup. He did not care I was part of a team that got the United States Navy's firefighting schools accredited for college credit. He did not care by serving me and others with letters. He would be putting the citizens of Windcrest in danger of not having fire department support during the day. The first four people he served letters to all were available during the week, at least one day, and some multiple days, when it's difficult to get volunteers. The bottom line, he only cared about making sure he followed through with firing the ones on the list, no matter what effect that had on the safety and welfare of the citizens of Windcrest. I am glad I had the opportunity to serve the citizens of Windcrest, and I look forward to serving you again in the future.
Bill Jackson.
Good evening. I hope to be positive instead of all this negative stuff that we've heard tonight. Most people like to say how long they lived in Windcrest. You do the arithmetic. We bought and moved in our house July the 10th of 1978, so that was some years ago. Mayor, what you read on Mrs. Winn is also in Sunday's news, San Antonio Express News in the faith section. Because it's hidden in the faith section, a lot of people may have, I hate to say, may have passed over that piece of paper, but it, also, it talks about their, they had a dream for this 70 acres. It talked about they were standing up on a hill, and the wind blew by, and that's how they came up with the name of Windcrest. And they also talked about how they saw a future for this city. A place where you would have neighborhoods well-kept and houses looking great, an environment of friendly neighbors, good schools, and a well-run, well-run city with pleasurable amenities. And then they added in the golf course, they have added in the tennis course, and they also added in the swimming pool. And now that we have the post office, that's another amenity, too, that people look forward to. A lot of people have spoken here that we need to take, we need to do action against the post office because it's losing money. I got a various background. In the business world, sometimes you have a business and you use what product called a lost leader. That's, you're gonna, if you sell it, you're gonna take a, a loss on it. But in the end, you also reap benefits because the people who come in to buy that lost leader will buy other things, and you make a profit on it. Just wait until the cash register rings up a whole bunch of sales over here in December, and look at the annual sales for the post office. I vote we keep the post office even though it may cost the city money. Thank you.
Cheryl Ann Flick.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Ann Flick, 606 Golf Crest. First, I would like to congratulate our mayor and new council members, Frank Archuleta and Joan Pedrati. Congratulations on a great election, and I'm very happy you're seated. So, we had a great weekend on Golf Crest with the neighbors. Everyone was outside putting up their lights, and I got to meet some of the neighbors, since I'm a fairly new resident, or, well, for this year, I moved in this year. And my neighbor, a couple doors down, she's affiliated somehow, I won't go there because she, she fears professional retribution, but she's somehow affiliated with the elementary school, and she was telling me that for the first time, they could not, apparently the fire department comes every year and puts up the Christmas lights at the elementary school, and for some reason this year, that hasn't happened. And, you know, they contacted the fire department, and then when they didn't come, they contacted them a couple more times, and they even went and knocked on the door at the barracks, but nobody was there. And so I'm just asking, I wish the fire chief was here tonight. I'd ask him myself, but he's not here, so I'm going to ask the mayor to look into that and see if we can get some Christmas lights on the elementary school for the kids. Okay? Thank you very much.
Veronica Dixon.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Dixon. I live at 206 Cloud Bond Drive. I have a question about a shooting in Windcrest of an animal. I understand that a puppy was killed by a resident because it acted up or something, and I was just wondering if there is a police report on this that we can have open means request for. I know the police chief isn't here, so, but I'm just asking this question.
We'll have him get ahold of you.
Right. I'm really concerned about this because if a resident did have to use a gun on an animal, why wasn't the animal control officer there? Or why wasn't, why wasn't there a police officer there at the time this was occurring? My other question is, I don't really see a lot of publicity for light up. I know we have the banner, and we've had a couple bursts on the city of Windcrest site, but I didn't see anything in the Herald like the other cities have had, saying what's going on, even if you put it in the calendar section. So that was my question, too. My last question is to Mr. Brennan. Does the Windcrest Volunteer Fire Bugle Crew have their IRS yet? I know they have their state, but I haven't seen them come up on the IRS yet. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll direct them to you, Mr. Reese. I'll direct them to you, Mr. Reese.
Hi, Mike.
Go ahead and answer. What is it? Do they have their what?
Do they have their IRS standing yet as a 501, C3 or 4?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, because without that, they can really not do fill the boot.
Okay.
They can't do it just with their state. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ruth Fritz. I live at 602 Belle Four, and I'm trying to bring some positive side today to the meeting. I want to take the opportunity to thank the fire department to come out to our house and help us put the Christmas lights on their time. And we were one of the first people to sign up. It was a little bit of a delay, but I really want to thank everybody that came out to our house and helped us to get the lights up and help us with the light-up. And again, I want to say, like this other lady said, I think we need to put a little bit more emphasis on lighting up the city. I'm also part of the newsletter committee, and we will be helping for the light-up this weekend. And I would like to see a little bit more advertising for the people who come out for the light-up. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'm Jenny Newton. I live at 629 Weatherly, and I have lived here since 1971, so I've been here for a long time. But I am hoping that this year will bring us, as Mrs. Nguyen, in the obituary that I read for her, that we would become a friendly city again and not have all of these ugly actions that we have had to watch during the last few weeks. I was really unhappy to see that. Then I do have one request or a question. I'm wondering, why do we start so early? This is right during the dinner hour, and I, it's hard to get here by 6 o'clock. It's right at dinnertime. Could we not start at least at 6:30 or 7? Just a thought, and thought I would run that by you. Thank you.
Hello. I'm a non-resident, but I do a lot in with Windcrest. I know a lot of faces here in Windcrest. I went to the garden, to the women's garden party they had today at Takas Park, and then I go to the We Act with Pam Dotson. So there's a lot of things going on here in Windcrest. I didn't know anything about the post office. It was under some kind of, you know, threat, but, you know, somebody the other day said, well, you know, the money or the Molly Pruitt Library over there is not making money, and it's going to close. Well, you can't close a library. The Windcrest Garden Club has a community garden over there, so we need the library. On the news, I heard that it lost a million dollars just in fines alone because people don't bring their books back. So, but we need the post office. There is no post office around here. The only post office we have is that landmark, and that's not a full service, that's just a pickup. But the reason I'm really, really here is because I adore the ponds. Y'all have such a nice green space. It's a gem. You got really wonderful ponds. Now, I got, one of the Egyptian geese had fishing wire wrapped around it, and it was so tight it went to the bone. So with We Act, we got, we called Rescue, Wildlife Rescue, and a volunteer from Universal City came out who is retired, and he's kind of like the duck whisperer. So we were really, really lucky to get him, and he got the duck, and they took it to a San Antonio facility that they just opened up brand-new on Bassie Road. They spent three weeks tending to this goose, and they brought it back. And so I just want to give credit to Wildlife Rescue for that. The other thing is, is that I saw your Publics Maintenance People at the pond up close to Eagle Crest are putting out a new drain or concrete. I asked them about, they got these beautiful cypress trees there, and I asked about if we could get some more cypress trees at the other pond, because I think what happened, all the trees in that island, that's where the birds all hang out because of that island, and it's a sanctuary. It's like National Geographic there. There are so many birds there, such a variety. And they hang out at that big pond down there because of that island. Well, I noticed, because I've been going to that pond for years and years, and I've seen the same geese down there for years and years. And the trees in the middle of the pond have died. And I asked the maintenance man, you know, about, you know, getting those trees replaced, and he says, "Well, we're just going to chop them all down, and we're going to leave it bare." I said, and I said, "Really?" And, you know, I mean, that's where the birds go. That's where they're protected.
Time.
Oh, okay. But I just wanted to ask if we could get some bald cypress trees put there? They're really good for drainage. Thank you.
That concludes non-agenda topics. Next would be agenda topics. First is Roy Huff.
I was surprised to see the name Bugle Crew assigned to our fire department, and I was wondering whether anybody's talked with the county. The county does provide us support. Has anybody talked with the county about whether they can support a Bugle Crew?
I'd like to speak on number four and five under Discuss an Act. With regards to members of the council and the mayor having emails, I want to warn the both parties that the mayor is an ad hoc member of the council in that if someone is not here, if there is a tie, he has to vote, and he doesn't know when that situation will come up, or someone may choose to abstain. He doesn't know when that happens. So, mayor talking with council members more than really one is really an open invitation for violations of the Open Meetings Act. In the past, I'm sure that was violated on a consistent basis, but this is a fresh group, and I think that the laws should be followed. With regards to designating a necessary procedure for requesting information from the city manager. When I came on council, I was told, and in fact, there was a lawyer, an outside lawyer that came and told the council members that unless they had a vote of the council, they couldn't speak to anyone. They could speak to the city manager and him alone. Well, how is a council member supposed to find out information so that they can write policy, or to find out if there are any problems if they don't know? I think that it's probably, you know, a legal jargon that they were trying to use to prevent the council from doing their job, and I hope that's not what this is about. I was also told by a new city manager that, "Oh, Ms. Rita, you are the bosses," because I was complaining to him about the procedures that had been happening before he got here. Well, they ended up being the same after a while, and I think that the free exchange of ideas, not with one another because that would be a violation, but with the city manager and in his presence, if he wants to have, be present at any meeting where you would like to talk to any of his subordinates, I think that you should have that right, because stifling exchange of ideas, or trying to get to the bottom of a problem, or trying to get information so that you can write a policy, which is, by the way, one of your main jobs if you look in the charter, policy. And policy, in the past, has been dealt with, well, it's just a reason for lawyers to get involved and make money. Well, no. Policy is to set the standards so that everybody will know parameters, borders, don't go there, this is what you can do, what you can't do. And I think that policy is lacking here in Windcrest. I tried, when I was on council, to do a procurement policy and an ethics policy, and it was met with opposition. So, roll up your sleeves and try to get balanced approach, and I really mean that, from all parties concerned, to get a balanced approach to running the city of Windcrest. Thank you.
Hello again, Mayor, City Council, citizens of Windcrest. I'm afraid we, the citizens of Windcrest, have been duped again. When Alan Baxter sat in the daisies and said the city was forming a new fire association, he said it was going to be transparent. He stated it was going to have accounting done by CPA. I have not seen transparency yet. The financial portion of their bylaws do not differ from the way the Windcrest Volunteer Fire Association bylaws work. The only mention of a CPA anywhere is the fire protection agreement, which was hastily run through before the city elections, and it states under Section 7N, "At the city's request, submit to the city a financial audit of the WVFDBC performed by an independent third-party accounting firm. The cost of the financial audit will be reimbursed to the Bugle Crew by the city." I have several concerns about both the fire agreement and the legal formation of a nonprofit by the city of Windcrest. I say a nonprofit formed by the city because it was formed by city employees on city time using city funds and city-paid attorneys. If that doesn't raise a red flag or make the hairs on your neck stand up, it should. Several years back, the fire department secretary and the citizens of Windcrest were told it was illegal to pay a city employee to work on things for a nonprofit organization while being paid by the city. The secretary was reassigned to do permits out of the fire department office and occasional fire department stuff. She was told under no circumstances was she allowed to work fire association stuff or fundraising while clocked in. I guess that no longer applies to city employees with a city-formed nonprofit. I think the city manager should account for how many times he tried to work with the existing Windcrest Volunteer Fire Association and Chief Brown to negotiate a contract or agreement like he was directed by Alan Baxter at a city council meeting after Councilman Matt Vandenberg resigned from trying to work on an agreement. He doesn't need to answer that. I can answer that for you. None. I think Alan Baxter should explain why he kept going on, going to the city's hired special attorney and directing how he wanted negotiations to go. These actions completely undermined the authority given by the city council to Councilman Matt Vandenberg to try to negotiate an agreement. This interference was the ultimate reason the negotiation stopped between Councilman Matt Vandenberg and the association. Matt Vandenberg couldn't effectively do what the city council had appointed him to redo, to do, so he resigned. I think the city attorney should explain to the citizens of Windcrest how an agreement between the city manager and the new so-called Bugle Crew could legally tell a third party, i.e. the Windcrest Volunteer Fire Association, what they can and cannot do within the city of Windcrest, especially when the third party isn't included in signing of the agreement. I think the city council should explain how an ordinance was removed from the city codes and ordinances when munici code was adopted without any discussion, action item, or vote. I originally thought it was a mistake, but because it has been brought before the city council by citizens for rectification, and nothing is done, it tells me it was not a mistake, it was intentional. I know I'll never get the answers to these questions I asked tonight, but the citizens of Windcrest deserve to know what is being done behind closed doors by members of the city staff. As I have stated, there are many concerns, and I believe this is something that should be thoroughly investigated and reviewed before the citizens allow the city manager to sign a document of this magnitude.
I'm Tiny Riggs. I live at 229 Zephyr. I'm starting my 48th year there, and I would like to give you a little history of the fire department. I think I should have made this little talk earlier. Back in 1970, when we arrived here, Chief Takas and his wife Lou were our first visitors. He came recruiting for the fire department, which the Air Force would not let my husband participate in. However, we signed up and did volunteer work as much as we could. His aim was to have a fire department that cared about the residents of the city, got along with the residents, and that we all recognized each other. He pretty well succeeded. His name was Steve Takas, yeah, but he was Steve Senior. You know Steve Junior now. Then came Tom Nguyen. Tom had grown up in Windcrest. He probably helped build some of your houses. Tom became fire chief. His thing was, he saw we had a medical need in Windcrest. We were starting to get older, so he started the medical group here. He also, our fireman, went to A&amp;M to be trained. We all had a nice relationship to each other, and it was always, "Hail fellow, well met." Now let's go to our third fire chief, what I'm looking at right now. He was a kind gentleman, and he improved the fire department along with the other two. Now we come into, the mayor got involved. He decided he wanted to run the fire department. He didn't have the first indication of what to do. So then he brings in a man after two interim chiefs that were well-qualified. He brings in a man that is not qualified. He was never a chief. He doesn't know San Antonio, Windcrest, our residents, and he started firing our firemen. These firemen were residents of the city. They were taxpayers. They cared about their neighbors. Now we have borrowing time on other fire departments. This bothers me. Ladies and gentlemen, my house is in jeopardy. My property is in jeopardy because of this attitude. I've heard comments that one of the councilmen said, "We need to pay fire department." We don't need a paid fire department. If that happens, your San Antonio, your Windcrest property taxes are going to reach a high that you never even dreamed about. Let's get back to the old type of firemen and the old fire department we had, and let's get us a fire chief that understands this type of neighborhood. Thank you.
Sue Alexander? And Cheryl Ann Flick? That concludes the citizens to be heard.
Well, thank you. You are very well behaved, and I appreciate that very much. So, citizen beers is finished. Item number three, unedited financial. City council will be presented an unedited balance sheet year-to-date comparisons for the month ending September 30, 2017, FY 2016-2017. City council will consider approve, consider approval of the unedited balance sheet year-to-date.
Mayor and council, I'll make one correction. I am not asking that you approve this statement, as it is still in a preliminary state. We are trying to address several issues with the state of Texas Controller's Office regarding sales tax, and so there is a possibility that... And so there is a possibility that, okay, let me rephrase that. There's not a possibility, some of these numbers will change. We are addressing, do not have the final numbers for final payment to the city of San Antonio for the annexed area yet. We are working on two audits from the Controller's Office where they want money back from us because of rack space customers, duplicate payments. And we are anxiously awaiting for a state sales tax audit completion for cons. So these numbers as presented, we had revenues of $6,443,000. We have expenditures of $6,405,000, which according to this report leaves us at about $38,000 positive. I'm estimating, worst-case scenario, that we'll make a $240,000 adjustment to this number, which will put us at a negative $201,903, which will leave us a restricted fund balance of $1.5 million and unrestricted fund balance of $800,000. Yes, I'm open to questions at this point.
At some point you, we will have a, a, a final, right? I mean, you're just, at this point, you're just briefing us, correct?
Correct.
Or where we are?
Correct. We're waiting for basically the state of Texas to give us our final information.
Any idea about what, how, what the length of time?
There's no reason in my mind why it hasn't already been done.
Okay.
But we have not received an answer yet.
In view of this situation, I think we should move this to our next council meeting.
We, we can do that. I guess if there's any questions, I guess we can, we can.
I can, I can attempt to answer some questions.
Because at this point, you're just briefing us where we are.
Correct.
I can put my questions to the.
I second that.
I, I don't think there was, that wasn't a, was that a motion?
No, it's just a suggestion.
Were, were there any questions before? Okay, item number four, ordinance, there are none. Number five, there are no resolutions. Item under discuss an act. The city council will receive monthly financials from September 2017, October 2017 from Don Hockley, Windcrest MFO, including sales tax revenues for 2016, 2017. Was there anything else that, I mean?
I assumed we did the September.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, October, numbers aren't available because of our software system. The current in-code system that we're using for financial accounting does not allow us to have two periods open, two annual periods opened at the same time. We are trying to keep 2016, 2017 open till we resolved the aforementioned issues. I believe we made the decision this morning, we are going to close 1617 and open 1718 so that we would have in October and November numbers available for next meeting.
Mr. Archuleta, you have the agenda, is something?
Yes, I've, I've got a few items here. And this may not be a fair question based on what you said, but there's this one chart here, and, and basically, I just, I need a little bit of an explanation. The 215, 216, and 216, 217, each October and November, it's a zero. The state, I know there's, there's two months behind from what I've been told, but logical mind says that there would be sales tax for October and November.
Correct. We'll receive the October sales tax mid-December.
Okay. That's just for me, edification for me, I just.
Right. The, the August sales tax numbers we received in October, September numbers we receive in December, or November. We expected that process to be finished by now, but the state hasn't finalized the process.
Now, the other question, I've got actually three more questions. It'll be real short if I can. You know, Windcrest is known as the home of the $5 permit. And I've looked through the budget, and it's, kind of go everywhere to, to connect the dots. And my only question on there is, is our permits, are we breaking even our permits?
We are breaking, we are, we are making money on our permits if you take all the permits as a whole.
Fair enough. I just want to connect the dots. It's kind of hard to do that.
With the construction we've had and the construction we're anticipating, the permit fees should be in a positive balance for at least the next two years.
Okay. And, yeah, you know, I used to sit out in the audience quite a bit, and during the budget process, this point of discussion came up that, are we debt-free? And the answer I got was, heard. And there may have been some information since then. It was subject to interpretation. Now, we know that the post office makes no money. It's a great institution. I would never, ever want to close the post office, ever. Sumo Pool makes no money. We do have a couple line items, major line items like the lights, that are debts, ongoing debts. And, I mean, I have a car payment, and I pay money on that. I'm not debt-free. And, and I understand you said it was subject to interpretation, but citizens want to know, are we debt-free? What's the interpretation? How you interpret that?
If you take the interpretation of the word debt, yes, we are in debt. If you take the interpretation promoted by the Texas Controller's Office and the Texas Attorney General, we are not in debt because these projects are not specifically allocated tax money out of a fund. For instance, if we had set these up as a loan, collateralizing it with our sales tax numbers, it'd be considered a loan. We collateralized it with property tax, it'd be considered a loan. Since it is not collateralized with a tax items, the state of Texas does not consider it a debt.
We got, we had that line item for thousands of dollars. That's not considered a debt. I'm, I'm just asking. I need that clarified.
If, yes, if we had taken the ponds and said the $50,000 a year payment, and we're going to allocate part of our property taxes specifically can be used for no project other than the ponds, then the state of Texas would consider it debt. Since we just have it as a general budget operating item, the state does not consider it debt, nor do the public auditing groups.
Understand. The last item I got is a, a point of information. You know, I make phone calls, I've asked for meetings, and what I get is that everything has to go to the city manager, which, I think there's an exception here. And I could be wrong, but page 13 of the charter, Article 6.01 Finance Department, "The municipal finance officer shall be appointed by the city council and report directly to the city council." Now, I have no, what I read it is, I have no qualms to think you should CC your, the city manager. But I think you should report directly when I, when I answer, not go through the city manager. And if you're going to CC it, other councilman, I prefer it be Ms. Pedrotti. And that's just a point of information. Counsel, is that right?
It does say that, it says that municipal finance officer is appointed by the city council and report directly to the city council. I think that means reports to the city council as a body. You know, it's reported to the body. I'm not sure that that is talking about individual city council members have the right to go straight to the finance officer for a report.
And I'm not sure either. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, well.
Would you get back to me? I'm just trying.
Yeah, I'll try to figure that one out.
And, and the whole thing here is this, you know, and I've been in a lot of new organizations, and this is a new organization. And in any new organization, you know, there's, there's storming, and we're in the storming phase, and then you have forming, and then you have norming. So, you know, we're just trying to get through the storming, and I'm just trying to get some clarification. So, thank you.
No problem.
Can I ask you one quick, or, it's not really a question, but a clarification? Mr. Archuleta said we're the home of the $5 permit. Can we just clarify that? Because that's not accurate. Every permit in the, in the city is not $5.
No.
And, and I just think that people need to understand there's a difference.
Right.
In what permits are charged $5, and what permits are charged a portion of the cost, and, if you could just clear that up a little.
$5 is for residential permits of a normal nature, repairing a roof, air conditioner, et cetera. The rest of the permits are for like building the Holiday Inn, building the senior citizens' center, et cetera. We expect large amounts of money from those projects.
So basically, it goes back to the residents that's benefiting from the $5 permit?
Correct.
That's what I think it was geared up for. Okay, thank you.
And this may be, maybe a question for the council, because there's, a lot of times, these kind of questions probably could be resolved if, if I come ask you directly, or if a council member comes. If I don't understand the financial, I guess what I'm trying to find, find out, what's the, what are the limitations? If, if I get this financial statement, I, I would like the opportunity to come have a conversation with you and say, "I don't understand what this is." So, but I, but I need to make sure that I'm not, because I can tell you, I'm, I'm sure it says what it says, but you, in my mind, you work for the city manager. And, and I say that because the city manager is, is in charge of running the city.
Correct.
And so all things should go through him, in my opinion. And, because if he, we pay him a lot of money to run the city, and, and he should, he should run it. So I guess the question is maybe on limitations of, if I get this financial report, and I have a question, and I don't understand, you know, whatever line is, what are my limitations? Can I, can I go to you directly, or, and I guess this may be for the council, or the city manager, or how, how we, because I, I do think sometimes we can eliminate a lot of open question, and not, not to suppress any open communication, but many times, I, if I go ask a question, I don't need to say it in, in public. I can, I can find out, I can understand this better, and I want some, some guidance from the council or the city manager about what I do if I get this, and I, and I have a question. And I guess I'm looking for the council for some.
Okay. My opinion would be, if, I would prefer an appointment was made.
Thank you.
So that time could be scheduled for it. And that Mr. Castillo be made aware of the fact that this meeting was happening.
I'm fine with that.
Other than that, I've, well, I've talked numbers for 40 years. I'll be happy to talk numbers until.
And I'm, I'm just trying to keep, you know, sometimes questions can be answered before we get in here.
For, for example, mayor and council members, earlier today, I guess it was right before 5 o'clock, and I was sharing emails with one of the council members on the diocese here, and it was related to coordinating the, the email saga that we have going on. And pretty much, I think my response was, I put in a work order, and I said, "These are the people in contact," and I copied them, and by me doing that, it's easier for me to follow up later on, to make sure that things get accomplished. And I know we exchanged maybe three emails the last 10 minutes before 5:15, and I think we've got, we coordinated all that already. So it's just a matter of communicating, which we did, and we set up a little meeting that they'll be getting together, and we'll move on. And hopefully, that'll answer all the questions. I believe if we establish that form of communications, you know, and usually it is friendly, it's not hostile in either way, and, and we can move forward.
Additionally, I think that we need to clarify.
Yeah.
A point. The mayor is in a totally different position than any of the council members sitting here. And I believe, just as I have, I have done throughout the last, whatever, week, if I have a question, I direct it to you, and you either tell me who to talk to about it.
Yes.
Or you give me an answer.
That's right.
I think the mayor, perhaps, from my reading of the, of the city charter, is in a different position. I think the mayor, because he is also, whatever, the chief operating, whatever, all the titles, all the hats he wears. I mean, I think if the mayor chooses to ask the CFO a question and set up a time to meet with the CFO, I don't know that that needs to be run through the city manager. In, in my, in my reading. I may be wrong, but.
That is a, that is a council decision?
I personally think that, this is my opinion. And in the military, if an officer, in an officer, you would have to go through the ranks. You just cannot just go, if a general came in and started talking to one of the enlisted men, we have, you know, and look, of course, the enlisted man is going to answer. You want to go through the ranks. You want to follow the procedure. The procedure is through the city, city manager, back down to the mayor. I don't, I don't think there would ever be a problem with the mayor and the city manager communicating. And this is what we said that we was going to try to do, is to work together. And if we can do this, we have no problems. And that's all I'm getting at.
Right. So just to wrap this up, because I, I think what I'm hearing, unless there's objection, if I, if I or any city council member has a question about the finances, that's what we're talking about. I don't want to get too far off of anything else. We will make an appointment with you. We'll make sure that the city manager knows that it's happening, and it, and I guess if he decides to show up, he can show up.
Correct.
Is there any, any objection to that?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good.
All right. Again, like I said, I'm just trying to limit the time that we, if I, if I ask you a question, and it was, it was kind of a no-brainer that you could have.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, was there any other questions? All right, item number two, and I guess I should ask this before we get to the items, because there were several people who said they wanted to talk before the, is anyone want to talk to item number two? All right.
Just a quick, quick statement. Since August 2016, there have been 296 new voters registered in Windcrest. Eighty-nine percent of those are in the age of 65. So Windcrest has a much larger number of working citizens in the city. Forty-eight percent of the new voters are under the age of 40. Many of those folks would like to be more involved with their city government but are unable to be at a 6:00 PM meeting. Since our city has more working citizens now and a mayor who has fixed hours at his employment, the council should move this council meeting back to the traditional start of 7:00 PM to accommodate them. I would like to point out that the reason given for moving start times of the meetings were to accommodate city staff. However, prior to the previous administration, the department head reports were only discussed when there was something of interest to report. It is a waste of city staff's time to appear at council meetings to say, "You have my report in front of you. Do you have any questions?" Thank you.
Any other citizens for number two? Okay, item number two, city council review, discuss, make, take action on dates and times for future city council meetings. Mr. Jacoby and Mr. McFaul?
Yes. Since it's our, Mr. McFaul and my particular agenda item, let me make a motion that we do not have another city council meeting in this month of December 2017, and that the next regular city council meeting be held on the 22nd of January 2018 at 5:00 PM for the monthly department head reports, and then the regular city council meeting at 6 o'clock. And then, that each following regular city council meeting be held on the third Monday of each month, starting at 5:00 PM, again, for the monthly department head reports, and the regular city council meeting at 6:00 PM.
I'd second that.
Okay.
Discussion?
No, we're going to get the discussion. I think the, I want to make sure what we're, what we heard was, as I understand it, no city council, no further city council meetings in December. The next city council would be on the 22nd of January, starting at 5:00 PM. And I think what I, and again, you may help me, and then every third Monday?
Third Monday in each month, yes.
Starting at 5:00.
Only one meeting a month?
One meeting a month. By the start.
January 22nd, you said none in December, and the next one on the 22nd? Is that what you said?
The next one on the 22nd of January because of a holiday.
Got you. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I, I asked before we started if there were any other citizens.
I just got an item thirteen.
No, no, we're, we're on item number two. Continue with discussion.
I just, I just want to clarify. We'll have a meeting January 22nd, and then we won't have another meeting, I mean, there will be another meeting in December, and then almost all of January, and then you want to move to one meeting a month?
Yes.
One meeting a month on the third Monday of each month.
Okay.
By the charter.
Okay.
I'd like to, you know, from my point of view, we're here to serve the citizens. And I would like to do it at 7:00, but I understand your point, too. And can we compromise at 6:30? Would that, would that be a good compromise? I just want to meet you halfway. I really think we're here for the citizens, and, and people work, they get off work, they need time, and there's a lot of traffic out there now. And I understand you want six. I want seven, but I would ask that we do 6:30. I, I, right now, in the beginning, I just don't think one, we're new, and I think we need to have the two meetings right now. We, we should revisit that. In fact, I would move a motion that we should have the meetings on Wednesday.
A motion's not in order.
All right.
You, you can make a motion if it.
Well, as a discussion, just think about Wednesdays, because Mondays is hard for staff to get everything together after the weekend, and, and get up here and get things done. It's been traditional, but by doing a Wednesday, it'd have two working days to work on issues. Before you hit council, I think we'd be better prepared. And again, that's, that's just my thought.
I, I think we've got a lot of stuff that we're, as Frank said, as Mr. Archuleta said, we're new, and we're trying to get the, get the swing of things. But I think there's enough things going on in the city right now that limiting the council to one meeting a month is, I don't think that's a wise decision. I think that the city, because the, our citizens don't know what's going on unless they can come here and listen to it. And basically, if we're saying, we're only going to meet once a month, and we're going to meet at 6:00, when none of you can be here, that's kind of flying in the face of the Open Meeting Act. And I think that there, like I said, there's too much stuff going on, too many things that need to be clarified. There's too many issues, the fire department and everything else, to say that we can get it all done in one meeting a month. And that, that's just my feeling.
The motion's been made.
We're still discussing. Is there some reason, we, we just had some people talk about a, the, the age of Windcrest getting younger. I would like to know the reason why that you would go to 5:00 versus we, rather than, than 6:00. What's, what's the purpose? Two, two questions. What's the purpose of going to 6:00? Number two, how long, how long, Kelly, how long have we been doing two, two, two meetings a month?
I believe you were here, so that was.
Safe to say, five, six years. We've been doing two
Yes.
meetings a month. And so, we're, and, and my sense is, those are not, those are not meetings that, that go very quickly. So, what we're saying here is, this motion basically says, you, if you, if you work, you're going to have a problem getting here. And, and the fact that we have had two meetings a month for several years, and have filled up that time. So, I, I see, I, I mean, is, is there a reason, I would like a reason why you want to go to one meeting a month when we're filling two?
First of all, the motion has been made, and the charter says that we can have, that we should have a meeting once a month on the third Monday of each month.
So have we violated?
Where's that in the charter?
Check it out.
No, I'm asking you.
You read it.
I'm asking you what section.
That's up to you to look at.
Excuse me, can you tell me what section that's in the charter?
Well, the motion's been made.
The motion's been made.
There will be no.
And we're open for discussion. That's what we're doing. We're discussing.
Second. Okay. I, I think it's adequate for the time that we have on here, and the reports that are being made at the time, like I've heard that where most of the reports, they come up, and they, according to some of the citizens, they don't really say much as such. So, if that's the case as such, then we have the monthly reports at 5:00, and we have the regular meeting, which is, I think, adequate in, in a month's time, at 6:00 P.M.
But it hasn't been for five or six years. Okay? You, no, you cannot, I'm sure you have something very interesting to say, but you cannot, you cannot.
Okay, there's not, the attorney has said it's in section 3.10 of the city charter, and there's nothing in this 3.10 that says anything about how many meetings we have a month or don't have a month. So, as the mayor stated, we've had two meetings a month, and as the city secretary verified, we've had two meetings a month for five or six years, and probably still had things we needed to take care of.
Move on.
And I would just ask that we, we consider the fact that we are really denying the citizens the ability to answer, to, to know what's going on in their city if we cut it down to two meetings, or one meeting a month, and started at 5:00. I just don't think it's fair to the people that voted in this city.
It's amazing that, at this particular time, we've had meetings from, for the last, I've been involved in the city council almost five years, that some of the people, all of a sudden, everyone wants to show up to a meeting at this particular time. That would seem like no problem. There was no problem with the people coming, showing up at this time. So what's the problem with them showing up at the times that we're talking about? Where's the, where's the problem at?
I don't think there's a problem with, with you, or with me, but there are people that work, that don't get off work until 5:00, and then have to drive home through traffic, and can't get here at 6:00. I just think we need to consider the fact that the people that elected us might like to take part in this process.
Any other discussion?
Again, we're here to serve the people. And if we're not serving that working class of people, we're not service, servicing our citizens. And that's, that's my bottom line.
Actually, I thought the charter said 7:00. Did it not?
It did, but they changed it.
Okay, all right.
I think she's right.
All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, the motion is on the table to not have another meeting in, in December, that we would meet in this 22nd of January, which would be, at this point, somewhere around six or seven weeks from now, that we would then meet every third Monday of the month at 5:00 P.M. That would be 5:00 P.M., and with the meeting starting at 6:00. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, city council will review, discuss, may take action on requesting applications for board, boards, committees, task force, appointed groups, or commission positions required to be filled by the charter code or previous council decisions. Councilmember Petrotti.
I was waiting for our city manager to get me a list of those positions that might be up for, for filling, and I don't know if he was able to get that together yet.
Not yet. We were almost done, except we just got caught up.
Then I would ask that we, well, unfortunately, table this until January 22nd, and, and you can get me that information, and then we can bring it before council and see if we can get those positions filled.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to table?
I second.
Motion to table. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of tabling, raise your right hand. Yes? I'm sorry, did you?
I vote yes.
All right, 5-0. Item number four, is any citizens to be heard on item number four? Okay, item number four, city, city council will review, may take, review, discuss, may take action on preparation of a policy concerning email between the city council members, mayor in relationship to the Open Meetings Act.
I move that the city council direct the city manager to draft a policy for presentation and action concerning the use of email, micro blogs, social media websites, text messaging, and instant messaging by the council and mayor to conform with the spirit of the Open Meetings Act. I realize that there is a hyperlink on that agenda item, and if anybody wants to try to click on that and get the information, better luck than I had. But basically, the Open Meetings Act doesn't give any direction. So I would just ask that we do that.
You, you made your motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I second her motion.
Okay, now, discussion.
I just think that there isn't any direction in the Open Meetings Act, and so I would just request that, that our city manager draft up some kind of policy to, to present to us, and, and, and give us an idea of what is, when it's proper. And this is based on the fact that the day after I was sworn in, I received an email, and it was directed to all the council members, the city manager, and the former mayor. And the city manager will attest to the fact that I assumed somebody had hacked somebody's email, because I was kind of surprised. So I just think that for, just, just to protect everybody and to make sure we're following the law, that we, we get a policy. Just something to, to, to direct.
I think that's what we're doing now, following the charter and Open Meetings Act, right?
Well, I know that there's some question of whether or not the Open Meetings Act is always followed. I would just like a written policy.
Is a policy in place, is there not?
Well, I know that the Open Meetings Act is, is active in the course of charter, but Mr. Brennan, I mean, is there, is there a policy that maybe you have in some shelf out there that's different from what we have already?
I don't think, I don't think we have a specific policy on it, because the Open Meetings Act does govern it. You know, there's a fairly recent amendment to the Open Meetings Act that provides for a message board, for communications among city council members and staff. And y'all may want to look at that.
Yeah, they did that in the eighty-fourth session, and then they did nothing in this session. But specifically in the handbook about the Open Meetings Act, they, they say, the legislature hasn't provided the necessary direction for these areas. And I'm just asking that our city manager offer us some direction.
Open Meetings Act.
Texas Open Meeting Act. That's what we're following.
Well, a policy can be prepared. I mean, it's kind of a summary of the Open Meetings Act, but certainly we can do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Brennan, are we now following the Texas Open Meeting Act?
I, I sure hope so, because it sure applies to everything we do.
That's what I assumed.
Mr. Brennan, is there anything in the Texas Open Meetings Act that addresses the issues that I brought up, except for the message board?
It, it just basically says, don't, you know. I mean, basically, what the rule is, two, two city council people can discuss an issue, but they can't draw in or bring in a third city, a third or fourth or fifth city council member to that discussion.
So if a city council member sent out an email to everybody on the council, and the city manager, and the former mayor, and perhaps discussed something that could be considered policy, or a questionable issue, that would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act?
Possibly, and it's a very bad idea to do that.
Thank you very much.
You mentioned social media. What, how did you mean that?
Well, I think if you read the training manual for the Texas, the Open Meetings Act, they specifically state that in response to its charge to consider how advances in technology and increased use of social media affect the communication of governmental bodies, the legislature has said that, basically, you have to be very careful of, of what is a walking quorum, because they, they talk about Facebook, they talk about instant messaging, they talk about all the different forms of, of communication that exist in our, in our world today, whether I understand them or not.
Any other discussion? Okay, the motion was made to direct the city manager to prepare a policy concerning email between council, mayor, in relationship to the Open Meetings Act. It's a move that's seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. 5-0, thank you. Number fives, any citizens to be heard on number five?
Mayor and council members, we will try to bring you at least a draft on the 22nd.
Hearing none. Item number five, city council review, discuss, may take action on a policy designing necessary procedure for requesting information from the city manager, and requesting city manager place an item on the agenda. Mr. Petrotti.
I'm going to move that we just clarify, and we spoke about it before, just clarify what, what we need to get to you to make sure that we don't have the issue that we had at our first meeting.
I'm going to let Kelly explain that one, because that one has gone through like three changes at ordinance. I'm not sure if we're on B, C, or E. But Kelly knows it by heart.
Thank you.
And there's a timeline and all that good stuff.
Okay, so, um, on, I'll just do it, instead of hours, I'll just do it days. It's better, it's easier to understand. On Monday is the day that I would need anything from council to be placed on the agenda. Tuesdays, that's my time to gather it, prepare it, get it to Mr. Brennan for legal wording. Then on Wednesday, by five, or by the, by the evening, I would need to have it, a draft copy out to all the councils, so that you all can see what is on the agenda. On Thursday is the time that any item would be removed, if it's your own. Can't remove other people's agenda items. So if it's yours, and you see that maybe somebody else had the same thing, you're on the same page, can you remove that, combine it, add me to this? You would direct me at that time to do that. Friday afternoon, by noon, I try to get everything to you all with attachments, so that you guys can see. And then Friday, by, within seventy-two hours, I post it.
Okay. And, and Mr. Castillo isn't right here, so I, I don't know if you can answer this question. If we want something on the agenda, we follow that procedure. If we're simply asking a question, that would not be the procedure that would be followed. So if I sent you an email and said, tell me how many days are in a month, that wouldn't become an agenda item, right?
Unless you requested as an agenda item.
Just wanted that clarified. Thank you very much.
So, so I assume this was just informational. There's not, there's no action?
I, I don't think we need to take action.
Okay. Item number six, any citizens to be heard on item number six? Hearing none. City council review, discuss, may take action on committee, task force, appointed groups, board or commission members, or who are related to city council members by affinity or?
Conseguinity.
Conse, wow, in violation of the city, city charter.
I would just move that we follow the city charter in appointing people to the different boards, commissions, or other, other groups.
Is there?
I think we always have.
I think we have. That's what I, that's exactly what I was going to say.
Then can somebody, Kelly, can you give me a list of people that are on the newsletter committee?
Those are not appointed.
By the council. Council has nothing to do with the newsletter committee.
In the charter.
Okay, can you, Mr. Attorney?
City manager is in charge.
Can you tell me, can you tell me where that's in the charter?
I have to look it up. I haven't seen it.
You can have at least, it doesn't, there's not a number, a limit of how many people can be on the newsletter committee.
I, I wasn't asking about the limit. I was asking about people being appointed, appointed to positions.
They are not appointed.
No one was appointed.
Not to the newsletter committee.
I wasn't here, so I don't know that to be true.
Never here, to be honest.
I'm asking, I'm asking, pardon me?
You were never at none of the meetings, to be honest with it.
Pardon me?
Pardon you?
Point of order. This is not the discussion we're having, and you are out of line, and I'm going to request the mayor instruct you on that matter.
I do not, I'm not Obama where you have to point your finger at me, okay?
Point of order. Will be no personality here.
All right, we're discussing your motion.
It's on page twenty-seven.
There will be no other discussion or comments about whether people were here or not here. We're discussing this motion, and that's what we're going to discuss.
Page twenty-seven of the charter, under ten point three dash four, under nepotism.
Right. No person related within the second degree of affinity, or within the third
"No person related within the second degree of affinity or within the third degree of consanguinity to any elected officer of the city or to the city manager may be appointed to any office or position or other service to the city, including contractual arrangements for which they receive compensation." I would think being on the newsletter committee is a service to the city.
No, but they're not appointed, that's a voluntary...
It said, I don't think it...
We're asking for a clarification by our...
Excuse me? What do you think, Mr. Attorney?
Did y'all see that in the Charter somewhere, about the newsletter? I'm not seeing it.
There's nothing that specifically states any committee, it just says, exactly as I just read, that if they are appointed to any office or position or other service to the city. Now, the question is, are they, are the newsletter committee appointed? And I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I don't know the answer either. We're going to have to look into that.
Then I say we table this until you can look into that for us.
Mr. Castillo, who's in charge of the newsletter committee?
The newsletter committee is our public relations lady, and the newsletter...
But who's ultimately responsible if he doesn't designate?
Myself. And all the people, and every month, we put it on the newsletter that we're seeking for more volunteers. We do not have enough, and we're just seeking volunteers, that's what it is.
The question on the table for the attorney will be, is the newsletter committee, does newsletter committee fall under that, the guidelines of the Charter, as to whether or not a family member, et cetera, can serve on that? So that's a question for you.
Okay.
And I heard a motion to table?
Yes, please.
Or a second?
I second.
All those in favor of tabling, raise your right hand. Item number seven, I know that at least two people wanted to speak on that, I think, three people, okay, I had Ms. Alexander, Mr. Greenwood, and Ms. Wright. Okay? Ms., whoever, Ms. Alexander, here we go.
I'm Sue Alexander, I live at six thirty Crestway Drive, and I can't remember how many years I've been here, but a long time. I'm the president of the Bear County Water Control and Improvement District, number ten. I want to talk about our fire hydrants, what you call them, at the water district, we call them flush valves, okay? And right now, we have an inter-local agreement with the city, and it only addresses two things. One, it says that if any fire hydrant needs to be repaired, that the district will repair it. And it says, "If we do that, then the city will be responsible for paying us for those repairs." That's all that's mentioned, and I really think there are several things that we need to have in writing to be sure that this is being done. And I think y'all have a copy of what we're requesting. We would like to first of all address the fact that the water district becomes the owner of all fire hydrants in Windcrest, and the district will be totally responsible for any repairs and the cost of any repairs. And so that takes the cost away from the city. The Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department will be responsible for ensuring that all fire hydrants are working by making a yearly inspection of all fire hydrants. The results of those inspections will be given to the water district and to the city within thirty days of the inspection. In addition, fire hydrants are requested, if fire hydrants are requested by the city or the fire department, the city will pay for those. If the water district wants additional fire hydrants, we will pay for those. All CIP projects will include the possibility of relocation of fire hydrants, and the location will be jointly decided by the water district and the city. Right now, we have some fire hydrants that I believe you would almost have to hunt for to find if there were a fire. And we want to, as we do our CIP, we want to move those fire hydrants to a more visible position. But we will definitely work with the city and the fire department on where those are located. And the fifth thing we want is that all new fire hydrants will include a STARS outlet, and we will, the fire, the water district will pay for that. What that is, is it just makes it a lot easier for the fire department to connect their hose to the fire hydrant than it is right now. And this is kind of a new thing, and you can still buy the fire hydrants without the STARS connector, but we want all of the new fire hydrants to have the STARS connector. And those are the things that we're requesting.
Thank you. Ms. Wright?
Very quickly. Our fire department was turned into a political football with the previous administration, and at the August fifteenth, twenty sixteen, city council meeting after the fire on Crestwind, the ex-mayor and two current council members accused the prior fire chief of not checking the fire hydrants. They were the same members who received a report five months earlier that all of the fire hydrants were checked and in working order. They obviously didn't listen to the former fire chief when he explained that they checked all the fire hydrants once a year during the winter months because the process requires a lot of water.
Mr. Greenwood, do you hear?
Well, I thank Ms. Alexander for clarifying a couple of things. After reading this document, it left me very cold. I wasn't sure what it was going to do for the citizens of this community. The water district and the city has a thirty-five-page agreement, and some of this is in that. I would think that would be the document that the water district and the city needed to clarify what's going to happen with the hydrants. I don't know whether the water district board of directors has addressed this at this point or not. I haven't seen anything on it, although I know it's been a subject of discussion for several months. I guess my basic question is, what's this going to do for the citizens of this community? Is it going to be more efficient? Is it going to save money? Or are we just changing it for the sake of changing?
All right. Item number seven, city council review, discuss may take action on establishing a new fire hydrant policy at attachment number three. Let me make the motion on that, table it.
No, this, this is...
Are you making a motion to table?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Discussion on the motion to table.
This is my item, I put it on, and I don't agree with tabling it.
Okay, so I'll withdraw the table. So you're withdrawing your motion?
Yes.
Withdrawing your second?
No.
Well, if the motion's withdrawn, it doesn't exist anymore.
Okay, great. Motion's withdrawn. Mr. Shelton?
This is something that Colonel Alexander and I have been discussing for some time, and we've both had some joint input into this, so I'm going to move that we approve a new fire hydrant policy. And I'll go ahead and I'll read the complete thing, although Colonel Alexander hit the high points. Number one, all fire hydrants located in WCID number ten will be owned by the water district and the responsibility of Bear County WCID number ten. The city of Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department will check all fire hydrants on a yearly basis. This will occur between January the first through May the first, or September the first through December the thirty-first. All test results will be delivered to Bear County WCID number ten and the city of Windcrest within thirty days of testing. Bear County WCID number ten has the right to restrict flushing and testing during Edwards Aquifer water restriction stages. If more hydrants, more fire hydrants are requested by the city of Windcrest or the fire department, these new hydrants will be paid for by the city of Windcrest. All new CIP projects will include fire hydrants, and Bear County WCID number ten will work with the city of Windcrest on the locations. All new fire hydrants will include the STARS outlet provided by the Bear County WCID number ten.
Motion's made, is there a second? That's a motion. I'm asking if there's a...
I made a motion.
Yeah, he made a motion.
I second it.
Okay, it's a motion and seconded that we approve the policy that was just written by Mr. Shelton. Any discussion?
No, I just heard that there's a... Sorry, I heard that there's a thirty-five-page document that exists. I have a fiduciary responsibility to my citizens. I haven't seen that document, and haven't been able to do my due diligence. I can't make a vote on something that may conflict, don't conflict, I might say it's good or bad, I'm just saying I want to do my due diligence. So I'd have to abstain.
Any other discussion? So, Mr. Shelton, I think you told me that you had a conversation with Ms. Alexander, and so she's, the water district is in favor of this?
She and I have worked on this jointly.
Okay, all right. And the motion is just to make these particular changes, there's no other... It's right, right here.
This is the fire hydrant policy, it doesn't address other aspects.
Sure, okay. Any other discussion?
Just one question, have y'all reviewed that thirty-five-page document? Is there any conflict in there? I mean, I'm just trying to do diligence there. Mr. Attorney, point of information? Okay, understand, what's the thirty-five-page document about?
That's it? I'm sorry. I presented out of that thirty-five-page document the only information that has to do with fire hydrants.
Fair enough.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed?
Abstain.
Or zero passes. Item number eight, any citizens to be heard? Ms. Wright? Just so I'm clear on the timing of this, and I need some help. You get six minutes on total or each agenda item?
Total, and I...
Okay, so you're... Okay, all right, just want to make sure, okay, thank you.
I support our city paying for a forensic audit. While I was on council, I noticed there were a number of discrepancies in the financial reports from month to month where money in one line item would disappear or amounts would be lower even when there were known expenses from prior months. In September twenty seventeen, in the September twenty seventeen report, there are numerous problems with budgeting for the past year. The final number in the department's usually balances, but the line items in the budget are over their projected dollars. It's apparent that either the needs aren't being met in other line items to make up for the shortfalls in others, or the budget numbers are grossly inflated. Either way, there should be a forensic audit, it's the cost of doing business.
Anyone else on item number eight? Okay, item number eight, city council review, discuss may take action on procurement of services from a professional public accountant firm to conduct a forensic audit. Also, member Archuleto?
I made a motion that the city procure a CPA for forensic audit.
I'll second that.
Motioned and seconded that the city procure a professional accountant for a forensic audit. Let me ask you some questions. We haven't gotten to that point. Discussion.
One question I wanted to ask is, the forensic audit, can you explain that to me?
Well, that's a very detailed audit. It's separate from the normal audit, it's when they really go into the nitty-gritty, from what I understand, at a different level, you go digging a lot further. I'm not an accountant, but I do know forensic means you dig deeper.
It's an audit on the audit that's already been done.
The audit we have is not a forensic audit. They don't go down to another level.
How deep do they go, Mr. Archuleto?
Let me ask the accountant.
I'm asking you, you want a forensic audit, you don't know how far the other one goes.
I know it goes further than the regular audit. I know that's something they, this is my thing here, okay? As you are well aware, we've had, an administration's been around for a long time, and we have a new administration. I want a clean bit of health, I want the mayor to have a clean bit of health, but also, when you're in for a long time, sometimes you just have some systemic issues, you just need somebody else to look at a little deeper to do some cleanup.
We have an audit, supposed to review, coming out on the, that's coming out in January. And that's, we have, I think we should table that to after the audit in January that we received because they just finished an audit for the city. And to talk about something that have not already been taken play, that we don't even know what's missing or whatever, I think we should listen to the audit that's been completed. Can I ask Mr. Hockel to come up for a minute? Mr. Hockel, if I'm mistaken, and I'm not mistaken, is there, what, when is the audit supposed to, the people that did the audit supposed to present what they found and what's going on?
February or March.
Okay. Normally, is it a total review, is that a total review of what has happened in the past year?
I'll use an example. I'll use an IRS audit as an example. If they audit...
Don't point at me.
We'll use... And they do a normal audit, they're going to come out and check numbers. If they do a compliance audit, you have to prove, you have to have a birth certificate, birth certificates of your children, you get into much more detail.
Okay.
My only request that if you're going to consider this, we be prepared to hire another accounting clerk during the extension of this audit because it'll completely disrupt the operations.
How much did we pay for this audit that we just completed? Can you, anyone answer that for me? The audit that just was completed?
Fifteen sixteen audit or the sixteen seventeen?
Sixteen seventeen audit.
Okay, it's ongoing, at this point, it appears it's going to be between thirty and thirty-six thousand.
So when we're talking about forensic audit, what are we talking about?
I don't know, I have a phone call into our audit, our audit firm, just to get a clarification of what he would think needed to be done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Just one final question, could you do, would it be a lot cheaper to just do it like one quarter instead of a year? Would that be a lot cheaper? I wouldn't know.
It would be cheaper because it'd use less of the audit's time. I mean, the whole thing's going to be based upon the audit firm's time.
Exactly. So a quarter would be a lot cheaper. You could do a quarter.
Yeah, but I, as CPA, I'm not sure you're going to find a firm that's going to be willing to do less than a year.
They want to do it six months? Okay, I don't know, I'm asking, I'm not an accountant. And Mr., please don't be laughing, we don't make fun of people here. And that's a point of order.
Can you, can you generally tell us, and I know, I think you said something about birth certificates, but can you tell us the difference, or do you know, the difference between a regular audit and a forensic audit?
Okay, a regular audit, an auditor, let's use payables as an example, he's going to come out and pull twenty examples, samples out of it. He's going to take the invoice, compare it to a purchase order, compare it to a check paid, payment, check for approvals, et cetera. In a forensic audit, you're probably going to pull almost every single payable out there. Another example would be if we have a contract, use the contract with our IT firm. Council approved it, we have a general, it's reviewed by council, that's all a regular auditor's going to look at. A forensic audit's going to look in to see how those terms were determined, who was involved in it, and whether the terms were reasonable.
Is the time limit is going to overlap? Say, for example, we would decide to have this forensic audit, would it overlap the audit that's coming up? Would they...
I do not know the answer to that.
Because it'd be crazy to have two audits going on at the same time, that's what I'm getting at.
I have to defer and answer that till I talk to a senior partner with the current firm. I'm not even sure that, since they are contracted to do the audit, that they can be contracted to do a forensic audit, or we'd have to find another firm.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know the answer to that.
Regardless of the vote, I would like you to find out the cost of a forensic audit.
I have a request to the partners of our...
Regardless of the way this motion goes, I would like to know the cost.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Yes, let me... Ms. Archuleta, are you saying to go back to other audits? It's general, so many years back, and what would be the purpose of doing that?
Well, the purpose again is, I would like to have a clean slate for the mayor, for the new council. We've had a long-going administration. There may be some systemic issues, and I like to have a clean slate. That's the reason why.
How far would you want to go back?
Well, just something reasonable, six months. I mean, I'm not being unreasonable. I'm looking to save us money, but I'd just like to have a... Check out some systemic issues, see if there's... We've heard from our citizens, there's concerns, and there's some... There are concerns, and I want to address it and make sure we're... Table our ass a blank slate and go from there.
So, just to the last, basically to the last audit, not like years back?
No, sir. No, so just something recent. And maybe, and I don't know, that could be... Could the current audit just go down, do a forensic audit, cost some more, just a penny back on the current audit? I don't know those. I just know that came up.
Would you be willing, and I realize this is a big ask because you have to wait until January twenty-second, but would you be willing to table this until Mr. Hockela can get you the information about the cost, the ability to do more, less than a year, and kind of get a better idea?
And do some more research for us? I would.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
For the city charter, we... The charter was changed so that we would change audit firms every X number of years. Over the... If we go over the past five years, we are currently on our third audit firm. Past seven years, we're on our third audit firm. And my thoughts would be... Year one of the previous audit firm found some issues with procedures that we corrected, and the next two audits have found no other concerns. So, second comment would be if there are specific issues... I know that you want somebody from the outside to look at it. I've been a CPA for almost forty years. To quote a movie, "My integrity is not for sale." If someone would allow me to know what the issues were and allow me to address them, allow me to investigate if there is an issue, I'd be appreciative, and my staff would be appreciative.
Okay.
We table it.
So, you're...
It's my discussion.
So, you're withdrawing your motion?
I'm withdrawing my motion, yes, we table it.
The motion is withdrawn. I don't know that we need... Or maybe we do. Direction to you to come back to us. Why don't we make that in the form of a motion so that we get... To come back to us with...
I'll ask a question. If I have the answers, am I allowed to send a joint email to all these members?
No, he can answer the question.
I think where we're going with this is for you to go do some research, come back about what it would mean, how much it would cost, and then at that point, we would make a decision to whether or not we want to proceed or not. Does that sound...
I would just ask, can we have a suspense date, please?
Well, I think he's going to come back on the... I think the twenty-second of January is probably long enough.
It's going to be more than long enough.
Okay.
If I don't have an answer from our audit firm this week, I will be pleasant and pleasant.
Okay. All right, so I think we can do this by giving you direction, and we'll put it on the next agenda item for the January twenty-second meeting. Any problem with that?
No, it sounds fair.
So, it's been... I think you decided to withdraw your motion?
Yes, sir.
So, that's withdrawn. We'll proceed then. Item number nine.
Mayor, just for clarification, so this item here of the forensic audit, you would like for us to bring you some type of report or documentation on the January twenty-second meeting. Am I correct?
The direction I think was given was to investigate what that would cost, what, you know, and...
Bring y'all a report.
A report.
There we go, the little synopsis. Just want to make sure we're all in the same wavelength.
And we'll just put it on as an agenda item for a report.
Okay.
No one decided to table that? Who decided to table that?
I think he withdrew his motion.
Then you still have to do it.
Okay. Would you move that...
I move to withdraw my motion. I move to withdraw my motion.
Is there a second to that?
I second that.
Although, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. So, it's...
You still have to... Because you're drawing it out, so you still have to table it.
I move that we table, whatever it is, number eight, to the January twenty-second meeting to get further information and instruction from staff.
I second.
Favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? What do I want? Item number nine, citizens.
I've been appalled with what's going on in the fire department. The maintenance of the fire dorms had been grossly neglected for three years by the administration, and as a political ploy during the twenty-seventeen elections, they trashed the reputations of our volunteers. However, the twenty-sixteen-seventeen budget workshop showed the fire CIP plan had requested twenty-five thousand dollars to remodel the Gulf Crest dorm during the fiscal year of twenty-seventeen eighteen. Maintaining both of the fire dorm buildings from October two thousand thirteen to September twenty-sixteen was eleven thousand six hundred dollars. That average is to just under two thousand dollars a year for each dorm. What homeowner in this city can maintain their residence at that cost? Initial costs for repairing the dorms in September and October twenty-seventeen cost twenty-nine thousand dollars. The full cost of the repairs won't be known until the October twenty-seventeen report is released. I was also appalled to learn in that twenty-seventeen budget, twenty-seven eighteen budget, that the new goal of the fire department is to respond to fire calls within five minutes. Before the current fire chief, the average fire call in Windcrest was less than four minutes. Citizens should note that Gardendale has responded to fires in our city within five minutes, and their station is outside of Windcrest.
Any other citizens speak on number nine?
May I?
Please.
Paul Greenwood, six-one-one-zero-Windy-No. Been involved in this city for over thirty-five years. I had twenty-nine years in the fire department. Also was a member of the Fire Association for that amount of time. Was an officer in the fire department, which is made up of hierarchy of a chief, assistant chief, and we've had two assistant chiefs at times, two captains, and four lieutenants. It's very important that a fire department have a structure on the fire ground and in emergencies for safety reasons. That fire department has been in being for over forty-seven years with the responsibility for fire suppression and emergencies. We also have had a Fire Association, Inc., it's an incorporated tax entity, five oh one, that's under a set of bylaws that require a president, a vice president, secretary treasurer, and a master of arms that are elected each year. I was president for two years and a vice president for two different years. What's gone on in the last three years in this fire department needs some help. You know, four or five chiefs in three years. There's got to be some issues there. I've asked this before, and I'll ask it again. I think it's time to bring a management company, a consultant, in to look the top to bottom of our fire department and see what the citizens need to have in this community. I think our citizens deserve that. Thank you.
You were signed up, right? Okay, thank you.
Cheryl Inflick, six-zero-six Gulf Crest. My family has owned property in Windcrest since nineteen fifty-nine. My father bought a home on Zephyr when I was a baby, so I won the room. My family still owns this home. I attended Windcrest Elementary School, and I graduated from Roosevelt High School. I left Windcrest in the nineteen eighties and returned in June of this year after buying a retirement home on Gulf Crest. I have truly returned to my roots. I grew up with the Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department. For almost fifty years, they have served our community well, and they've done a great job. According to the National Fire Protection Agents Association, sixty-nine percent of firefighters in the United States are volunteers. Windcrest has always been proud of our volunteer fire department and the people who unselfishly give their time and energy to the organization. Our fire department has always been a source of great community pride. After moving back to Windcrest in June, I began to hear a lot of negative stories about the former mayor and the dismantling of the fire department. I heard that volunteers were actually fired. Some of them were Windcrest residents. It is shameful and embarrassing that our firemen were treated in such a manner. I'm not sure what is at the root of all this discord between the city and the fire department, but at election time, I strongly felt that with his years of experience, Dan Reese was the right man for the job. Mr. Mayor, I voted for you because I have every confidence that you can fix this situation and get our volunteer fire department back on track. Most importantly, I trust you to restore the dignity and morale to this valued organization. We need to bring back the pride and sense of community that is the hallmark of living in Windcrest. I know, under your competent leadership and the direction of the new council members, it can and will be done. Thank you.
Ms. Dotson?
I've heard mention this evening of the charter, and I've heard mention of the Open Meetings Act, but you also have ordinances that guide you, just as we have laws put in place through ordinances that guide us. And we have, I'm very thankful to say, on our Muni code, now, finally, a section that tells us about the Windcrest Volunteer Fire Association, Inc., and the responsibilities of the fire chief. It is now part of our code. And if... Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Brennan, can contracts trump code?
I guess if they're approved by the city council, they can, but normally they can't. Codes are laws.
Right. And in order to do a contract that is in contrast or contrary to the code, the code has to be amended, does it not?
Well, it can be amended impliedly by a contract that changes the terms of it. It could be. I'm not sure that that's happened, but it could be.
It's just like when you change the meetings. If we have an ordinance in place, in order to change those meetings, the ordinance has to be changed.
Yes.
Okay. I was gifted with a copy of the Fire Protection Agreement, the minutes from the first organizational meeting, and the bylaws and the constitution of this new organization. The first thing I would like to really point out to the residents is there is a section, there is on page one, number three, that reads, "The Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department Bugle Crew may charge..." Did you get that word? "Charge" any resident or property owner for the provision of any service within the corporate limits of the city. However, all rates and charges must be approved in advance by the city." So, you call the fire department, whether it be for...
Ms. Dotson, you should be speaking to us.
Whether you call the fire department for an emergency event at your home, or if you call because your house is burning, or you have a fire within, they may, and I guess that puts it at their discretion as to who they charge and who they don't, may charge you. It also talks about that they're going to enforce all city ordinances. Fire departments aren't given authority to enforce anything. They're there for our protection. The other thing that I found... Yeah, he's... I'm sure they're timing me. The other thing that really concerned me is city council. City council, our governing body, our representatives, is mentioned twice. And you know what you get to decide? You get to decide when the fire chief comes and speaks to you. That is all you get. Otherwise, it's just city. Well, who constitutes city? Is that just staff alone? Or direction from the council to staff? Doesn't say that. The other concern I had when I read through this document is that it talks about employees any number of times. And I've been assured by everyone sitting on that dais that they want a volunteer department, but yet the document that they presented, or that the city manager signed, doesn't hold that. I've always heard actions speak louder than words. And I also want to point out that the four people that sign these documents, or five really, not one of them is a homeowner. Not one of them has an investment in our community. The four people that signed for the Fire Association, I don't know who they are, they're not listed on the city website as members of the fire department. The minutes from the meeting, that meeting waived their right to publish a notice to the community and to the other firefighters that they were holding this meeting. So, the minutes from this meeting is put together by four people. And guess what? All four of those people are officers in that association. And according to this document, they will hold that office for the next three years because in order to hold an office, you have to be a volunteer for at least three years. This document is also a contract for seven years. Seven years. Where's the probationary period that we would consider whether or not this needs to be amended or improved upon? And lastly, I challenge the validity of this simply because it's a contract that is trying to negate code that we already have in place that identifies our organization in regards to the fire department and the Fire Association. I also challenge the night that this was brought forward back in October because the agenda item read, "City council will convene an open session to review, discuss, and may take action on a matter involving the fire department tax status." Tax status. What was the motion? "I make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and finalize the Fire Protection Agreement with the Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department Bugle Crew. To be formed a nonprofit corporation comprised of volunteers organized to provide fire and protection service within the city of Windcrest, and to take any necessary action, including payment of legal fees for the formation of the entity and the filing fees and cost." Mr. Brennan, tell me how that relates to that agenda item? I don't think it does. I think any person reading that agenda item would never have known that what the council was doing, which was...
Time.
Was what John Gritz argued against. They were circumventing their responsibility to the city manager.
Thank you.
Well, you're lucky that you were gifted with that copy because I wasn't. None of us got that. I'm direct...
Ms. Bedrati.
I'm making a comment about...
But she's citizens to be heard, so we're not commenting to citizens who are speaking. So, anybody else?
Read it.
All right. All right. Item number nine. City council will, will receive an update from the city attorney about the current status, the firefighting function. The city council may discuss an agreement between the city and the Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department Bugle Crew and may discuss concerns from citizens expressed at the November 20th, 2017 council meeting. City council may review, discuss, and take action on the conduct, status, and future goals of the fire department.
Let me make a motion to table that.
You're, you're making a motion that we table a discussion?
Make a motion to table, discuss in act number nine.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there a discussion?
Well, I would say that we've requested our city attorney to give us an update on this. Why, why would we need to, unless our city attorney isn't ready to do that, why would we need to table this motion?
You asking me why I'm tabling it?
I'm asking, as this is written, all we are doing is trying to get an update from our city attorney about the status of this. If our city attorney is ready to give us that, why do we need to table it?
Now, we wouldn't go into item number 10 then, but item number nine, I want to go ahead and, go ahead and table it until actually the third day of June.
What? I'm confused. So we can't receive, you don't want us to receive an update from our attorney about the status of this firefighting function until June?
Yes. I want to see item number 10. But this one, I want to table, item number nine. Any other discussion?
Yes, I really just have a, a point of information for the attorney, if you clarify. I've been asking questions and the brakes were put on me. It basically says, "Please understand these HR-related issues for volunteers, not Windcrest employees, and not related to department needs. Please review Home Rule Section 3.09." My contention is, I have three issues on this. The floodgates, precedence has already been set and the floodgates open. On August 15th, we had a hearing here, not a hearing, a report which aired a lot of dirty laundry. And in that report, that was HR concerned. The council, we had two council members that protested. They were overruled, but yet those HR matters were discussed. Precedent's has been set. Next, the formal application form clearly states firemen are employees. Surely, firemen are employees during an actual fire, that this form is vetted by our staff attorney. Per Charter Paragraph 5.03 duties, the city attorney shall review and approve as to form all documents, contracts, resolutions, ordinances, and legal instruments in which the city may have an interest. That application has existed for a long time. That application clearly states that firemen are employees. Firemen do receive a salary. Upon retirement, they receive a pension. That is a salary. In addition, they receive housing insurance and other paid benefits. They are employees. During my campaign, my number one promise was to repair the Windcrest Fire Department. I have asked for a list. I had no idea how many firemen had been terminated. I have none. But I have a fiduciary responsibility for that information. When citizens ask me, "How many have been fired?" Well, I don't know. I have to look at Windcrest FYI or something. I don't know. Why have they been fired? Well, the only thing I know is when a few firemen come up here and say some, I've asked for a copy of why these men have been terminated. Yet I'm told, oh, that violates the charter. I've asked for, has there been any rebuttal? You know, it's incumbent upon me to inquire. And when I'm, I think what I'm being, happening is I'm being hindered to do my job. I want a list of how many firemen have been terminated. I want their termination letters, and I want any rebuttals. Now, it's up to the attorney here to make a decision. Am I right? Or is this letter I got saying that I'm dealing in HR matters that don't concern me right? Precedent's has been set. The form is there. There is an amuneration, compensation done. And I want an inquiry into this, and I need my information so I can tell my constituents what they want to hear, rather than go to Windcrest FYI and say, well, find it when you do. Thank you.
Are you saying that FYI have all the information?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes, sir.
Is it appropriate to table an item that says update and discuss?
It's lawful for somebody to table, make a motion to table and-
Table a update and discuss the agreement and discuss citizens' concerns. It's, that's, that's a proper motion. I'm not, we're not taking action. We're talking about deleting an, an action that discusses, discusses for six or seven weeks.
Or till June.
Well, I have a point of information, and I'm just wanting clarification.
So you're saying this is a proper motion?
Any agenda item can be tabled.
We've heard from Mr. Greenwood, and I can tell you that I have, I have served in the Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department for a long time. This fundamentally changes how we do fire in the city of Windcrest. Fundamentally. Because the relationship before was a fire association did nothing but raise money and, and provide, provide money to the city. This agreement, which has never been on an agenda, never been on an agenda, never been on an agenda, fundamentally changes how we do fire. It says basically that the city is contracting with a volunteer association to provide fire protection. So we are saying that we are going to provide fire protection through a nonprofit that has never been done before. Never. And it, and, and as pointed out, it, it states that we can, or the city council or someone else can now, charge for services. Is, is that a fair assessment of what, what, what this agreement does?
It makes a big change in the-
It's not a small change. It's not making a new fire association, right?
Understand.
We're not making a new fire association. We are fundamentally changing the way fire protection is done in the city of Windcrest. Fundamentally. And the, and the motion on here is to table it, not to discuss it, to table it. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, they table the agenda item. That's right.
And is it fair to say that this agreement was never voted on by council?
The authority was delegated to the city manager to negotiate the agreement is the way I read the motion. I mean, that was the way it's presented to me.
Okay.
I, I did, I did prepare a report that hopefully everybody has.
No, we, we can't look at it.
Yeah.
We're tabling it. We have-
Well, y'all can look at it anytime you want.
Well, we can, but we can't hear. We can't discuss what you've, what you have. The time and energy that you've put into this, if this motion passes, is, thank you for your work. We'll see you in six, seven weeks or in June. So let's be clear. I, I want to make sure that I've, I'll say this again. This, this agreement never went before the city council. Never. Never. Did it ever go before the city council?
The, the way I read the motion, the agreement was not on the table to review. The city manager was authorized to negotiate the agreement.
So this agreement never came before the city council. Never. Never was discussed, never was outlined, never was used as an agenda item so the citizens could be, could, could understand what this does. Never. And we're going to consider tabling it because, I, I'm not sure what for. I mean, this is mind-boggling that we are, we are, we are about to consider tabling the most fundamental change in fire protection in the city of Windcrest ever. And where can, and this body is considering tabling it, possibly till June.
And additionally, I believe at the last meeting, I asked you, and, and I assume it's in here, to, to determine whether or not the city manager had the authority to even enter into this contract pursuant to our city charter. Now, we can't talk about it, and we can't discuss that, but I did ask you that, right?
I don't remember if you asked me that specific question, but my, my report does address pretty much the whole process.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we going to keep going back and forth?
You know what? I'm in charge of this, okay?
Don't-
Do you have, do you have any more, do you have any more discussion?
Yes.
What's your discussion?
First of all, you have not, at, at one time, when we had the, the other association that was in charge, I've been here for five years. Out of all the time, the city, citizens ask about what, how much money, about the financial reports, what's going on, never. They, the, the association lied many times about where, they never brought any paperwork, about where the financial statements were. Not one time. I had citizens sitting out there and ask, "What did you make for the gala?" "Oh, we're short to you next time." Next time never, never came around. These are things that, you know, we're forgetting. We're forgetting that there are problems. It's not that we come, you know, we're coming in and just, okay, we don't like this association. There are problems, and we have to recognize the problems and correct them. But we don't want, we want, you're going on an election thing. This is about, not about election. This is about what's best for the city, and we're at, as, as council people, think that we're making the right decision.
Do not tell me this is-
No, 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 no. We're, I'm telling you, this is what we, as council members, feel like this is the right decision. You want to debate it? That's fine, but I'm not going to debate you up here.
Do you understand that this fundamentally changes the way we do fire?
Are we going to move on?
I'm asking you the question. Does this fundamentally change the way we do fire protection in the city of Windcrest? Who's, who's in, by this agreement, who is in charge of fire protection?
Mr. Reese. You are, basically.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. The Bugle Crew is in charge of fire.
No, you are, as usual.
We have, we have a motion though.
And we're discussing.
Well, Mayor, motions to table are not debatable. They have to have a motion, a second, and they're not debatable.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling, raise your right hand. All those opposed. Item number 10. Any citizens want to speak or were signed up to speak on item number 10? Item number 10, the city council will discuss and take action to authorize the city manager to take all appropriate action to enforce the inclusive volunteer fire protection agreement between the city and the Volant, Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department Bugle Crew, including the engagement and payment of attorneys selected by the city manager.
I move that this item be stripped from the agenda. Article 3, Section 3.10 clearly states that items may be placed on the agenda by the request of the mayor, the city manager, or a city council member. I could find no authority in the charter or the code which allows the city attorney to place an item on the agenda.
Mr. Brennan?
I, I agree with what she said, Mayor, but it's my understanding the city manager is the one that placed this item on the agenda. I recommended to him that this item be included in the agenda, and it's my understanding he did that. It, it, it doesn't say I put it on the agenda. I just requested that this item, item be put on the agenda.
So who put it on the agenda?
I asked for it to be placed, but Mr. Brennan helped me prepare this item.
Okay, so, so the city-
I need a guidance from the council on this item.
Guidance from the council, who?
Me.
Okay. So, so you put this on the agenda?
Yes, I put the item on the agenda. Yes, I did.
Okay.
Therefore, I move that the city-
Are, are we, I just want to make sure we're done with whatever it is you-
If, if, if our city manager said he placed it on the agenda, then it's totally within-
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. Mr. Shelton?
I move that the city manager be authorized to take all appropriate action to enforce the exclusive authority of the Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department Bugle Crew to represent the city and the Windcrest Fire Department in connection with fundraising for those entities to prevent and to prevent any other organization from using branding, facilities, property, or personnel owned by or subject to the control of the city and the Windcrest Fire Department for any business or fundraising purposes. This authority includes the engagement and payment of attorneys selected by the city manager to accomplish the foregoing activities.
I'll second that motion.
Well, I think that my first question, if we can ask this question, is if I read this agreement, which I saw for the, was delivered to me tonight for the first time, the city manager entered into a contract with this entity to provide fire service for the city. Is that correct?
The answer is yes.
Okay. So, the line item for the fire department is in excess of $300,000. Is that correct?
I don't have it memorized, but that probably is whatever.
Take my, it probably is. So, basically, we're going to pay this organization to provide our fire service. Are they going to do it for free?
Pretty much. We were still being charged on the fire department. There are just volunteers to help us provide services for the community.
So-
All the assets, all the assets belong to the city of Windcrest.
So who's in charge of the budget?
We will be responsible, we will be responsible for the budget and the maintenance of the facilities and all the assets in general.
Okay, so who, we have an entity that you contracted with to provide fire service.
The city of Windcrest contracted with that entity to provide fire services, but we control all the assets.
Through you?
Through the city of Windcrest.
Okay, but you were the person who negotiated this contract?
Pretty much, yes, ma'am.
Okay. My question is, is there a dollar value connected to this contract?
In reference that we control, the assets are definitely, definitely under the authority of the city of Windcrest. There's no issues or any, any differences that the assets belong to the, to the association and all that.
Okay, but the operating budget for the fire department?
That's correct.
That is under, who's the-
The fire department belongs to the city of Windcrest. The volunteers will get the, the assistance, I mean, will get the, we will, they will provide the services for the fire.
At-
This is a lot clearer contract than we had before, and it separates a lot of liabilities that were not very clear in the past. As you, as you recall, well, you probably do not recall, you were not here, but if, when you have a chance and you read all the documentation that was provided to you, it gives all the, the reasons and all the, the pros of why we decided to do this. There's a huge liability that was left in limbo the way it was before, and we honestly believe that with this, decisions that were made, even as painful as they are, will definitely provide less liabilities, and they'll divide the liabilities and definitely become, the assets will be a lot more clear who they belong to and the responsibilities.
Okay. I, I think that if you're acting in the position of protecting me, I thank you very much. My question was, under what authority? How, I guess, how did this happen? I mean, there was never a motion, there was never, I mean, there was never an agendized item that carried with it a motion that was supported by documents in the agenda to allow you to go forward with this. I mean, I think if I understand this correctly, and I don't know if we can discuss this or not, but- but I think what happened was that on October 16th, there was an item on the agenda. I believe Ms. Dobson, uh, referenced this. And it, and the agenda item read, "City council will convene in open session to review, discuss, and may take action on a matter involving fire department tax status." That was the agenda item. A motion was made. There wasn't any documentation with that item. And a motion was made to authorize the city manager to negotiate and finalize the fire protection agreement with the Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department Bugle Crew to be formed a nonprofit corporation comprised of volunteers organized to provide fire and protection services within the city of Windcrest and to take any necessary action, including payment of legal fees for the formation of the entity and the filing fees and costs. So you acted under that. That's what, that's why you went forward and did this.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Mr., Mr. Brennan, can you explain to me how this motion was made based on this agenda item without any documentation?
Well, there doesn't have to be documentation on the table, uh, to make a motion-
Okay, but can-
-instructing the city manager to do something.
Okay, but can you tell me how this motion came out of this agenda item? How was the public to know that this was up for discussion?
Well, you know, agenda items don't have to cover all the details of what's gonna be talked about or discussed. Uh, when, uh, the purpose of an agenda item under the Open Meetings Act is to notify the public that a topic will be discussed at a meeting. And I don't have in front of me either, but I think that there was an agenda item that said there would be discussion about the fire department or-
The agenda item read, "City council will convene in open session to review, discuss, and may take action on a matter involving fire department tax status."
Well, uh, it said on, gonna discuss fire department, as far as I'm concerned. Tax status is one element or one piece of it, but I don't think it limited it or restricted it to just talking about the tax status.
So you are, you are of the opinion that that agenda item gave the public enough information to allow them to be aware pursuant to the Open Meetings Act that this was going to happen?
Yeah, the, the-
Okay.
-motion was broader than the, the actual motion was broader than the agenda item, but the agenda item's purpose is to provide a topic for discussion.
I understand that, and I'm asking your opinion.
And in my opinion, the, the fire department reference put notice out there to the public in all the different ways that it gets it, that there's gonna be a discussion about fire department affairs.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Well, uh, yes, I still have a point of information. You want me to repeat it? I'd still like to get clarified.
About the, about the motion or about something else?
I just want a point of information. I'm asking for-
You want a point of inform-
Yes. What I want to know is the, the questions I ask. And the questions I ask were basically, uh, I said, "There's presidents. Do I have a right for that information to get the list of firefighters?"
Okay, just, just-
And the other one, are they employees?
I would respectfully say, tell you that that's not part of the agenda item.
Apparently, that doesn't matter. We said fire department in it.
You said fire department. Well-
This is what I'm gonna ask you to do, okay?
Okay. I need an answer.
And, and I think you can probably get an answer. I don't think it's part of this motion. I think that, uh, that, that, that you can, you know, we can get, actually, the item number 11 talks about, about the, the firefighters who were, who were terminated.
So we can carry it thin.
What's that?
We can wait till then.
Okay, so the, the motion, and just so I'll clear, the motion is not the same that's in, that's in the, uh, agenda? And so there is some differences that you, that you read, and so I would ask you to, uh, to, to repeat that if possible, because it's not the same as it's, it's in here.
I move that the city manager be authorized to take all appropriate action to enforce the exclusive authority of the Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department Bugle Crew to represent the city and the Windcrest Fire Department in connection with fundraising for those entities and to prevent any other organization from using branding, facilities, property, or personnel owned by or subject to the control of the city and the Windcrest Fire Department for any business or fundraising purposes. This authority includes the engagement and payment of attorneys selected by the city manager to accomplish the foregoing activities.
I second that motion.
It's been second already. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Item number 11, anyone discuss? City council will discuss firing policy for the volunteers. City council will discuss firing policy for the, uh, Windcrest Volunteer Fire Department.
I'll make a motion that we table number 11.
Uh, I'm, I'm assuming there's a second?
I'll second it, of course.
Uh, any discussion?
Yes, I still, um, I have my point of information, and this was the appropriate action. I didn't, I at least like to do my point of information.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I, I've already said I can go over it again. But, uh, we, we all heard me very well and I read it. I can do it again. But the two issues is, one, do I have a right to that information? Since presidents has been set for, and, uh, it's HR information, right? But if HR information was briefed, actually, it's pretty dirty information on the fire department. And, uh, the floodgates have been opened. Now, I've read the regulations here, the charter.
Mr. Archulete, I'm, I'm sorry, actually, I, I was reminded that apparently a, a motion on the, on, to the table is not discussable?
Oh, it's not, not debatable.
Debatable.
I'm not debating.
Okay, you're-
I'm asking for information.
Okay.
I'm not debating anything. So, I want to know, I want, I want the list of firemen that have been terminated. I want the, uh, the letters of termination and any rebuttals. Uh, I feel in my position that citizens have asked me for it, and I owe it to them. And I need to, to make an inquiry. The other question I have, as we say volunteers, but clearly on this form, it, it says clearly, uh, for, uh, volunteer fired positions within the city of Windcrest are treated like a paid position. On the cover sheet, it clearly states, "The city of Windcrest considers the volunteers in the fire department to be employees of the city and treats them as such." And it clearly, uh, and the charter says that the attorney is responsible for reviewing these forms, so I, want to know, uh, this, are the employees? Uh, are the quasi-employees? Do I have a right for this information? So citizens know how many firemen have been fired for the reasons, uh, the rebuttals? And do I have a right for an inquiry? If not, I don't have that right.
Was that a question for Mr. Brennan?
Yes, point of information for the attorney. Mm-hmm.
I, I need to review that form if it calls volunteer firemen employees of the city. Uh, they, they don't measure, they don't meet the, the traditional IRS standards, which is the normal standard for employees versus other forms of engagements of, uh, of services.
Well, certainly, the charter says clearly that, uh, you review these forms.
I'm supposed to review, that's right, and I, I, I don't recall ever seeing that form before. It wasn't sent to me to review, but I'll re, I'm, I'm gonna review it based on your-
It's been around for a lot of years, sir.
In Section 3 dash 03, you can find the most information you're looking for.
And it, regarding your other question, uh, you do have access to city records, and whatever records you request, uh, that there's not some confidentiality otherwise about you, you have the right to receive those or review those.
Mr. Castillo, could I have those records, uh, by next Friday, please?
I, I'll work with Mr. Castillo to get those to you, to see what they're, I don't know what they're in.
Are we tabling this for, to the next meeting or till June or December or?
Table it to June, the 3rd Monday in June.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm glad you liked that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that this be tabled until June. Was there a year?
3rd Monday in June 2018, yes.
2018, okay. June of 20, moved and seconded that this be mo- tabled until June of 2018, whatever the 3rd Monday is in the month. Any further discussion? I guess there's no discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Number 12. Anyone have anything to say about number 12, citizens? City council will discuss and they take action on owned communication devices for the mayor and the city council members.
Now, I am gonna move that we table this, but only until the next meeting.
Which is January-
22nd.
Okay, that's fine. Just, I, I don't care.
2018.
Just until, but the only reason that I'm asking it to be tabled, I want to know what the cost is.
Don't, don't worry. You, I'll tell you what, you, you can just, you can, if you want to, you can table it until 2020.
No, I just want to know what the cost will be.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, moved, we table it until-
2020.
2020, that's fine, okay.
No way, that's not part of my motion.
What is your motion? Till the next meeting?
Till the next meeting.
Thank you. Moved and seconded that we table this until the next meeting. Any, uh, there's not a discussion. And all those in favor, raise your right hand.
Actually, hold on. I do have a discussion, because-
I don't think we can-
Well, I know, I just have a question. If he wants to table it till the next meeting, because he wants to know the cost, don't we need to ask somebody to get that information for him so we can maybe vote on it at the next meeting?
We would have, but I got cut off with the mayor.
I know that, that's why I was asking that we please let you-
Well, and, and this is more of a point of information. Mr. Hakla, do you know the cost of a phone and a tablet?
AT&amp;T, Sprint.
Mayor and council, that's a very variable question.
I figured it would be.
One phone, however many tablets.
I can buy you a phone for $29, or I can buy you a phone for $899 and anywhere in between. A tablet can go anywhere from $229 to... I'm gonna be conservative and say $899, even though I know I can get you a $1,200 one, but I don't, we're not gonna go there.
Okay, thank you.
You know what the monthly cost is?
And the monthly cost, well, the annual cost would run about $515 per phone, assuming we made phone and tablet, phone accessible.
Thank you. All those in favor of, like, tabling it to the next meeting, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay. I'm not sure we need number, uh, 13. I think we've already decided that. Number 13 is, "City council will review and take action on regular city council meetings for the month of December and January." Seems to me like we've already made that decision. January, the whatever.
22nd.
Seven weeks from now, we will meet again. All right, executive session. City council will convene in closed sessions authorized by Section 551, Decimal 072, 712, of the Texas Code, Texas Government Code to consult with its attorney on a matter involving proposed senior living campus in which the duty of the attorney to the city, city council under Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct and state bar of Texas clearly convicts with the Open Meetings Act. Second one, same, the same verbiage, "City council will convene in closed session is authorized by Section 551, Decimal 0712, in parentheses of Texas Government Code to consult with its attorney in a matter involving the current MEIA in which the duty of the attorney to the city council under Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly convicts with the Open Meetings Act." So we will be in-
Make a motion to table that.
We're in recess, and we're going to executive session. We're not tabling anything. Mr. Brennan? You can't, you're gonna table a, an executive session?
You, you can table any agenda item, Mayor. I mean-
Okay, you're saying that it, it's a proper motion to table an executive session?
Any agenda item can be tabled, Mayor.
Okay, so why don't we just talk about it now? Is that gonna be, are we gonna be violating some problems? I mean, if, if, if we can't go into executive session, can we, can we talk about the MEIA here in front of God in the world?
If it's tabled.
We, we can't because it's part of an executive session. It's not part of the, of the regular-
Can we talk about it in June?
Yeah.
Yes, we can move it to the 3rd, 3rd Monday in June.
Mayor seconded it. All right, we're back in session, open session. City council will convene in an open session to review, discuss, and may take a, possible action on the senior living campus. Okay? We want to review the senior living campus. Mr. Castillo, tell us about the senior living campus.
Let me catch, let me catch my breath here a little bit.
Well, we were gonna go to executive session, as you know, to talk about this, but apparently we can't. So we can't talk about an open session.
What we're gonna do with the senior citizen, uh, is, uh, as we mentioned at the last council meeting, y'all gave some, uh, some, uh, guidance to the potential developer, that, uh, we'll be working with them on the development of, uh, they'll be bringing forth approximately up to about $100 million of development into the community. And, uh, the council voted on working with them on two up and coming variances. One of them due to heights, and the other one due to parking. And, uh, that's pretty much, uh, two variances, and, uh, Mr. Shelton?
Yeah, that, uh, that agreement is based on them presenting an acceptable master plan that they-
That's correct.
Full council would approve.
Yeah, and that's pretty much all we have.
Any questions? Okay, city council convene in open session, review, discuss, and possible take action on the current MEIA. Tell us about the MEIA.
Pretty much, we're just working with, uh, rack space, uh, community and trying to see how we can extend the, uh, the, uh, the agreement. That's it.
At Rack Space's-
Yes.
Request.
Yes.
Timing?
It's moving- Ongoing.
Ongoing.
Okay. Any other discussions about the MEIA? General announcements? No, 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 hold on, hold on. Okay. Mr. Brennan and I talked about this, and I, and I think we, we can, we can probably clarify this. This is not a time for citizens to make announcements. This is the, okay, listen to me, okay? This is a time, talking to the city council, this is a time for the city council to make announcements. If we were to make announcements for, to everyone, then we could be here for a very long time if everyone in, in the audience wants to make an announcement. So I'm sure whatever is you were going to say is- Okay, I'll, I'll let, I'll let this happen this time because it does not spell that out. We are going to be very, a little more careful about this one, so please come forward.
Thank you very much. I just wanted y'all to know, I brought a cake up here to celebrate your election of the new mayor and our new two city council members. Everybody's welcome to enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we eat it before June?
It, no, it's gonna be, it's on the table, so I don't know about that.
Stop, stop. Okay. Any other announcements?
Reminder, uh, this Saturday, light up. And also, uh, for our next agenda, I think we need to, uh, have something about our progress or where we're at, uh, the, uh, bond election that we were that, that was approved.
That's correct. And actually, uh, we've been working with the engineer, and, um, I know, we had a little discussion with Mr. Brennan. Uh, we'll be bringing you up a little, uh, some topics of discussion.
But there's, there's a lot of ground to cover, and in May we'll get here real quick.
And I, I urge the council to, uh, when we bring you that, hopefully y'all can, uh, make some decisions on that. Because there's cutoff dates. Elections are in May for that.
This may go along the same route, but are, in this discussion, will you give us a status of roads and where we are with plans, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
So that will be part of the whole presentation?
It'll give you some options.
Okay.
And hopefully y'all can make some decisions.
The other thing I would like on the, on the next agenda item, or next agenda, is a, uh, some sort of status of the Free Information Act requests, however that can be couched. I know there's a lot of discussion about whether they are or- I know there's a lot of discussion about whether they are or not being, being accomplished. I know I've had a conversation with Kelly about, about what that is, and there may be some, some more explanation that, that's, that's not, not obvious. One last item of announcement, I had said when I was, that I would not take the $600 a month that the, that the current mayor has, I have chosen now to take that, and the reason I'm gonna take that is because I can't get a phone and I can't get a tablet. So what I will do is, I will take the money that the city provides, and I will pay for the phone, and it will be, anything I use out of that $600 will be city property. If I buy a desk, it will be city property. I will make that information available, but I am gonna take the $600 because the inability to act on what I would consider to be a very simple item has, has, has grown into something that now will not happen for seven weeks.
Or six months.
Seven weeks. So I, I will take the $600, I will use it for city property, I will use it for charities, I'll give it to CERT, maybe. But I, but I, but I will document that, and I will take, I will take the money, and I will use it for good purposes. It is absolutely amazing that we're sitting here talking about whether a mayor can have a phone.
Mayor, I'd also consider taking the insurance, you may need the medical insurance.
Alright.
And actually, I just have one other thing, and I know a lot of people, I've spoken about this with them, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware, I will be taking my stipend, and I will be donating it to the different charities in Wincrest, my first, my first check will be donated to Texas We Act, and if any other nonprofit entity in the city is interested in vying for those little funds, just give me, give me a call, and, and, because that's what I'm gonna do with mine every month.
And I also have a charity right there, I have four teenagers I'm gonna sponsor to Quantum Leap, I've sent it out to many people, I haven't got any takers yet, but Quantum Leap is a mindset change for teenagers, and I'm, I'm gonna pay for four, it's at my office, my business, it's world-class training for teenagers for a good mindset, and first come, first served.
Oh, I'm sorry, I moved that we adjourned.
I second.